All right, we'll get started. We'll call the special meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers. The agenda is the executive session to discuss legal updates. Clerk will call the roll. If you're here, say yes. Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Lahey.
Present.
Laborn Martinez.
Here.
Lisi. McGee, present. McGivern. Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin. With that, we'll make a motion to go into executive session. We'll make sure all the mics are off. We can stay in here. And Ryan will go and make sure the cameras off.
So moved.
Because it's a little, little small in back. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So give Ryan one minute to turn everything off. Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Bresnahan. Lahey. Laborn Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi. McGee, yes. McGivern. Murphy. Sullivan. Tallman. Bacon.
Yes.
Valentin. We're in executive session. 19, full City Council meeting. Clerk will call the roll. If you're here, vote yes. And just for those who are looking on TV, we did have an executive session prior to this. That's why we're starting a little late with the legal department on some cases outstanding. Therefore, out of that, we came out of that committee and now we're starting up the full council. Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Lahey.
Present.
Laborn Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern. Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The City of Hoyok.
City Council.
First item up is laid on the table, the Committee on DGNR, whom was referred fiscal year 2019, CDBG application, recommend that the city adopt the DGR recommendation for fiscal year 2019 with the following conditions: community policing, minimum number of walking patrols should be 55, Paper City basketball to develop and organize grant management capacity, the OCD, three police department drop-off center, and leases for real property must be reviewed and approved by the City Council.
I'll make a motion and remove from table.
Motion is to remove from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Under discussion, Councilor Bartley.
I'll make a motion to, well, just, I'll make the motion first and then we'll go and discuss. I'll make a motion to recommend to the City Council that we receive and adopt the committee's report.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, as you recall, the last time we were here, we had this before us. But for the first time in my eight years now on this board, we didn't have the mayor's recommendations on the spreadsheet. And we didn't have any committee either. So it was, but it was procured Friday. I received an email, I think, after 3:30. So I don't know if that's a late file tonight for the mayor's recommendations. Do we want to, may I just, Madam Clerk?
To answer a question, motion would be to suspend the rules, allow the clerk to answer.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Clerk, do we have a, do we have a late file from, from Office of Community Development with the revised spreadsheet showing the mayor's recommendations?
So what Irma did was she attached it to this item that was laid on the table, and I believe she scanned it to everybody.
Okay, so as long as it's, I just want to, so Brenna, it's in good order. Is it, okay, she did email it, so I just want to make sure it's in good order.
Okay, yeah, she just attached it to this.
As long as you're good to go, then I am too. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the mayor made his recommendations. You know, we all have them. The, what the DGR committee recommended all was to fully support the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendations. The mayor differed from those in numerous aspects. But I think we know, at least I hope we all know how this works, right? So, and we'll have an order before us, I don't know where it is, in Charter and Rules, and how Community Development block grant funds really works. And then we'll see what kind of a vote we want to take at that point. But it's, Mr. President, as you know, it's all for show. But there are a couple of councillors, Councilor Valentin, Councilor Sullivan in particular, did a lot of work. I mean, we all did. But they did a lot of work with the Citizens Advisory Committee. The Citizens Advisory made up of volunteers. They go in and look at all these applications. They did all this due diligence, put a lot of time and effort into it. It's a, it's not a lot of money, but the money that is spread around is really valued. And we took mics and Josie's efforts sincerely, and we thought that the Citizens Advisory Committee should be fully respected in that regard. And in this case, the, but the game, the way it works, Mr. President, is it's all for show. So this vote, although this vote's not for show, we have to vote on it. So if we tabled it, I'm not really sure what would happen to CDBG funds. I don't think they, I don't think it would move. But it's, the rest of it is all for show because, and it's over a million dollars, it's every year. We can make any recommendation we might. The mayor can just completely ignore it and do whatever he wants. So if we want, if we vote against a skateboard park, doesn't matter, can put a skateboard park in. If we want to put more money into demo, demolition, the mayor can avoid that and put it into any number of other items. And that's, in fact, what happened here. I think we, those of us on the DGR committee, we saw an email from Councilor Sullivan, said in light of what the mayor did, he's not, he's no longer going to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee as a City Council representative. So with that being said, the, you know, I'd like to have us support, you know, because we want to move this, we don't want to stall this in City Council. It's not fair to the advocacy groups. I think that would be really not the best way to do it. So I think we should just say on record that we support the DGR committee, which support the Citizens Advisory Committee, and move it, move it on. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I mean, I do know that Citizens Advisory Council made some recommendations, and I just want to offer comments about some of the mayor's recommendations and the mayor's awards. And my hope is that maybe he will reconsider some of this and maybe he won't. But number one, I wonder how do we provide funding, how do we not provide funding for demolition of dangerous properties and for the rehabilitation of city-owned residential structures, and then appropriate $70,000 to art installations on electrical towers at both ends of Main Street? If we were flush with money, maybe this is a luxury that can be afforded. But when residents are living near boarded-up and dilapidated buildings, poorly maintained vacant lots, to me, it's foolish spending. Instead, we will leave dangerous buildings standing and delay rehab, and the potential for a low or moderate income household to own their own home and begin to pay property taxes. I also have concerns that the mayor put $0 towards a safer recreation outlet at Springdale Park. While parking might not be a glamorous expenditure, done correctly, it could provide a significant safety improvement, especially for children. As the park is currently used, many vehicles go across the play and spray area to set up for picnics. But many of those same vehicles stay and create poor visibility to see children running around in the park. In addition, when the park is in full use, most of the cars parked on Main Street, it is difficult for the drivers to see people moving between parked cars and for people crossing the street to either go home or to their cars. And believe me, I have seen a few cases where kids have come very close to getting hit in both of those cases. Lastly, unless the mayor knows he has funds somewhere to provide community policing in Hoyok, I am amazed that he has cut the entire $20,000 request, which could provide up to 55 walking patrols. At the Public Safety Committee meeting, we discussed the need, when we were talking about our parks and trying to provide security, we discussed the need to have community police and bike patrols this summer, especially around playgrounds, to assure the safety of both the children and the staff. With all due respect, I encourage the mayor to reconsider some of his actions and hopefully look at what is going to provide immediate results for the community. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. So in addition to what Counselor Murphy just said, we've got to look, there's two others that really stand out to me. One was called Camp for Kids, which was zeroed out, and another one, Back to School Event, which was put in despite the advice against it of the CAC. The reason that was taken out, the Back to School Event, is a one-day event, one day, one day only. And it's also put on by the Sheriff's Department, which has access to a lot of other funds. This event will go on no matter what. This is just a contribution to it. The Camp for Kids is a good new program, right, run by Behavioral Health Network. And if, if nothing else comes out of executive session, maybe we need to get some kids into, you know, the Behavioral Health Network running a Camp for Kids and getting some early intervention programs going. It'd be nice, you know? Now, as far as the, the mayor's final decision hasn't come yet, right? What he is doing this year that I am pleased with, and I found this out after the fact, is he is meeting with the Citizens Advisory Committee one more time, right, which I, which I think is good. And just what we've talked about here for the last couple of minutes, if each councillor would take a few minutes and weigh in with him in the next day or two before he makes his final decisions, ask for some of these, especially like this one we just talked about, the El Corazon de Hoyok, all right? That, to me, I feel is an absolute, absolute waste of money in a poor community. I'll use my extra 30 seconds now because it dovetails, I didn't think we were going to get right to it this quick. To give you an idea where some of this goes, you've all got a box of Krispy Kremes on your desk, all right? $4,600 was cut from Hoyok Paper City Basketball. And we have another meeting coming up in which we're going to call in the school department to explain the fees they charge for the use of the gyms. The kids that are on the, on the Hoyok basketball program are going to have to sell 2,400 boxes of these donuts that are sitting on your desk, right? That's 24,000 more donuts, all right? So before they even buy a T-shirt, all right, just to pay back the school department what it wants for lights and janitor's fees and for what has been cut from what the Citizens Advisory Committee put into their budget, all right? So make it a little more specific for you all, as you talk to the mayor over the next couple of days. That's like each person here having to go out and sell 200 more boxes of donuts before you even get a T-shirt for basketball.
Counselor Lisi.
Just out of curiosity, whose donuts are these?
Yours.
They're yours. Take them home and remember to contact the mayor and talk about, talk about the CDBG.
But is it for the, for the basketball group, or is it for the, okay?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I bought 10 boxes.
[laughing]
Sorry, I'm short. Sorry, I'm short.
I thought I had to go home and sell these.
Sorry, I'm short. Well, you may have to if you don't get the mayor to change his mind. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a quick process comment and echo what Counselor Sullivan said. I'm very happy to hear that the mayor will meet with the committee again, because I think when we ask people to volunteer and they don't feel heard when less than half of their recommendations are taken, that has a chilling effect on trying to get people to volunteer. You know, we're having discussions and meetings about paying people so that they'll feel valued on the commissions. I think when our citizens step up and volunteer, the biggest thing that we can do is listen to them, value the work that they've done. And unless there is some unusual and compelling reason not to move forward with their recommendations, that in general, it would be a good and positive thing for the city if we did. Thank you.
Anyone else? So motion is that we receive and adopt the committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is public comment. There are two people signed up. There's Laura Clampett of 182 Locust Street. Just a reminder, time limit for speaking is a minute and a half. We'll go two minutes because there's only two people.
Hey there.
Just.
Thank you, finally. All right, Laura Clampett, 182 Locust Street. So I'm here today to speak on, I believe it's item 16A, which is the non-binding ballot question regarding fiber-optic internet. So, you know, to reiterate, this is a non-binding question. The Charter and Rules Committee recommends that the council put this on the ballot for November, which we would like to see happen. And we see this as a supplemental step to help HGN E gauge the level of support in the community. You know, we realize that they're already doing surveys and some feasibility studies. You know, those, the studies that they've cited are a project at Chestnut Street Apartments and also at the Cubit Building. But we would like to give the larger public an opportunity to weigh in, in a manner that's not a phone survey going to your landline. And we also think this is a great opportunity for HGN E to be able to share this information transparently with the public. One of the items in the non-binding question involves HGN E presenting their findings of the feasibility study to the full City Council, so the public can see their findings in a transparent manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Ken LaFave of 277 Suffolk Street.
Yeah, just wanted to basically add to that. I think she's reading almost verbatim what I was going to say. But basically, you know, this is just an effort to put this before the public. We understand that HGN E is doing the work that they're doing, and by no means, with the passage of this question, change that. And we certainly respect their practices as far as they're determining the feasibility of this. We simply just want to have a public poll, which the public can participate in and also receive the results of. Just because generally speaking, you know, folks probably aren't seeing the results of these surveys unless they're tuning into some very specific committees, and we just want to sort of get this in front of their eyes. If it doesn't, if it isn't feasible, again, just trying to put forward the question, I completely understand if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for public comment.
Can I ask a question on that, Todd?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I sent an email earlier out, and this is kind of a vague thing. This is, covers a lot of different things. But the good Madam Clerk sent back, I know speaking with Counselor Murphy, he wasn't aware of, there's two ways to get things on the ballot. It seems like this is coming up quite a bit lately. So there's one, the City Council can do it right, so that all of us, we can, we can vote for it. Or the second way, and that's generally in the last 20 years that I've been here, that's the way it seems to be, it's a preferred way, is what, 10% of the people who are registered to vote will go out and get a signature. And so I don't have the numbers in front, in top of my head, but I think it's like close to 20,000, 26,000. So, you know, I'm saying, we're, we happen to be seeing this a lot. So like maybe 20 people or 25 people want to put something on the ballot, and then we have to, you know, make sure that we have the right language and that sort of thing. Or the people can go out and see if there is a need for this. And I'm not talking about this in particular, I'm just talking about in general. I believe that's the rule. People should go out and get signatures. Because if they want a vote, we want to see there's enough people that want to see there's a vote. Thank you.
To answer a question, you are correct. You can do it either way.
Thank you.
Just one clarification. We'll have to go back to item one. It does, I'm looking at the sheet, it does recall, does call a roll call for yea and nay by the City Council with regards to the CDBG application. So the clerk, motion would be to go back to item number one.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the recommendation of the grant. Just understand, we polled Counselor Sullivan first. So start with Counselor Sullivan.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Lahey?
Yes.
Laborn Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you're approved, the CGB grant. Next is communications, number two, from the mayor, reappointing Mary Morris of 15 Oakwood Ave to serve as a member of the Commission on Disabilities, which will expire March 2022.
Make a motion to reconfirm the appointment.
Motion is to reconfirm. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is from the city clerk and our assistant, the special meeting and regular meetings for March 5th, 2019.
Receive and approve.
Motion is to receive and approve. Any corrections? Any comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number four is from John J. Fairer Esquire, letter regarding the notice of community outreach meeting, Hoyok Green Growers LLC, 18/20 Water Street.
Make a motion to receive. We all received a copy.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And number five is from the Hoyok Taxpayer Association, their annual meeting. It's an invitation.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Suspend the necessary rules, take up six through 10 as a package. They're all renewals.
Second.
Second. Motion is to suspend the rules, take up six through 10. Six is a petition for renewal of a second-hand license at 375 Whitney Ave. Seven is Ivory Billiards for 19 pool tables and one billiard table at 151 Chestnut Street. Eight is from William Sullivan and Company, renewal of a drunk dealer license. Nine is a petition, once again, from Sullivan and Company, renewal of a drunk dealer license. And 10 is petition for renewal of a delivery license, garage that 395 Maple Street. Motion is to receive and grant them pending the taxes. Everyone is current. This motion is to grant. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Roll.
Oh, there's, oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Roll call would be for the whole package for all renewals. Back to Counselor Sullivan.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Lahey?
Yes.
Laborn Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But your vote, you're approved, the renewals. President's report, Counselor McGivern sends his regards. He will not be here tonight, as you know.
Recovering from the parade.
He's recovering from the parade. He, Joe is okay. I know there's a lot of people calling and asking questions. Joe is fine. He's just taking it a little easy in order to make sure he's, he's back on par. As we all know, Joe doesn't miss anything. In his tenure, actually, we're talking about today, he missed three meetings out of his whole tenure here. I mean, it's 100 years, but, you know, three, three meetings, that's not bad. Just kidding, Joe.
I think it's four.
Yeah, four.
I remember, at least four.
So he does apologize, but just understand, he is, he's doing okay, and he'll be back for the next meeting. Counselor Valentin also sends her regards. She had a scheduling conflict, so she cannot be here tonight as well. Also, I just want to thank our police, fire, DPW especially, the St. Patrick's Day Committee, members of this board, everyone. What a phenomenal weekend that we had in the City of Hoyok for St. Patrick's Day. It's amazing. You'd go down the street and it's as if there was no parade. It's just like that clean. And they do it immediately after. So for everyone involved, the parade committee for all what they do, and I implore people to go to one of their meetings if they'll let you in. It's amazing. You stand there and they call out chickaby, progress, and then they move on. And you're like, how does, how does this parade go off? It's an amazing thing that they do. Can't thank them enough. Counselor Bartley for bringing them in to have the ceremony here. It's just, it's an amazing event, and it just keeps getting better and better. So I want to thank everyone who was involved. With that, I will go into committees. Unless someone else has something, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for that message, Todd. But I also want to let the community that's watching at home know, a couple of years back, the Dunninghue Institute up at University of Massachusetts did a fantastic study. And it was a study that had nothing to do with the City of Hoyok and nothing to do with the St. Patrick's Parade in regards to cost. They took it upon themselves and what their findings were. Their findings were, because of the St. Patrick's Parade and all the actions that lead up to it and whatnot, there's $20 million that's injected into the local economy. And you guys could all read this. You can Google it, or you can go to the St. Patrick's Parade, and you can read the white paper that was produced by UMass. And it's significant. So, and that's coming from the areas of Worcester to the Berkshires. $20 million is injected into the local economy for this one day. And at the time, we decided to do baby steps and just have the local, the parade. That's not including the road race. That's not including the ancillary celebrations that we have throughout the year. So when you go back to your constituents and whatnot, you can say, you know what, we're putting $20 million back into the local economy. Thank you very much, Todd.
There is one update. People want to know if they saw me in the, in the paper. They want to know if I, I won the fun run. I didn't. I tried. I tried really hard, but I didn't win. Just pointing that out. All right, so with that, ordinance committee, 11A, the committee on, oh, sorry.
Mr. President, could we suspend rules, please? And I'd like to make a motion to take the application for a street vendor license at the corner of Chestnut and Hamden out of committee so that we can.
Motion is to suspend the rules, take an item out of ordinance, take it out of committee for a vendor license. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I'll just take it. This is a application, the grill, food trailer, grinders and hot dogs, corner of Chestnut and Hamden, Hamden side parking. So take it out of committee, counselor? Is there a motion to this, or a, okay?
Yes, my motion is to suspend the rules and take it out of committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And?
Okay, so this person filed their application properly, and we had intended to take it up at our last committee meeting, but we had a little paperwork snafu. And so it's a non-controversial application. And in order to be business-friendly and let this person do business in our fair city, it seemed a reasonable request to move it along in its normal timing. The remainder of the application information that we generally obtain, and the applicant is here, if there are further questions for her, her name is Lisa Silvestri, is that they're seeking to operate the food truck two to three days a week, hours being 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And they have their permits from the various city boards that they need them from, which have been submitted. I believe the president has them with the application. And I think that's about it. The two to three days a week being requested are subject to weather, so that they might be flexible on the days.
Would that include weekends too? So weekdays and weekend?
Yes, yes. And I did let the applicant know that there might be questions to be a little more specific in that regard.
Okay. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to grant a special permit with conditions, but I just want to, I'll make that motion first.
So the motion is to grant the special permit with conditions? Do we have those conditions?
Yeah, that is two or three days a week, depending upon weather. So it's like to be weekdays. I like to get more specific in that. And I think the hours are between 10 and 13.
10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
And I just want to get understanding, Mr. President, from the applicant or from the chair of the committee, I believe the applicant wanted to start right away. It wasn't clear when, when she wanted, when the applicant wanted to terminate. So I don't know if the applicant wants to go through October, or I would imagine that would be about right.
Mr. President, under suspension of rules, could the applicant approach?
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow the applicant to approach the microphone and answer just a few questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make sure the switch is there.
Thank you. I think it is. Yeah, we're good.
Just tilt the mic down towards, if you would.
Okay, is that better?
So when, when did you want to?
It would be during the week. We're looking at Monday, Tuesday, possibly Thursday. And
Okay, so, you, you want to say November, or do you want to say October, or what?
I would say probably November.
Okay, so, so there you go. That's, those are my questions.
So, from March to November is one condition?
March, November, 10, 10 to 3?
10 to 3.
Monday through Friday.
During Monday to Friday as weather permits.
Correct, yep.
There you go.
Those are your conditions.
Yeah, and then just as long as she's up to speed with all the city permits and all that.
Yep, she has all that.
Attached.
Any further discussion?
You happy with that? Do you want to go longer?
So... There's no, Counselor, do you have a question for her?
No.
If there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. Actually, no, first, we got to do this, but the conditions. With regards to Counselor Bartley's motion with conditions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leese?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote. You approve the special permit.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Trim, you got donuts. What more do you, what more?
All right, 11A, the committee on ordinance has referred a special permit application for the use temporary storage unit at 50 Hoyoke Street in the White Lot for United Tractor Trailer School. Recommended that the special permit be approved under the following conditions, that the storage structure be permanently maintained, and the storage structure be aesthetically pleasing in nature.
So, the motion is to approve the special permit?
Motion is to approve the special permit with conditions. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
So, the applicant came in. They are a job creator for our city. A number of us have seen them doing their training in the area. And they currently have a five-year lease for their program. And we are recommending to award the special permit for the use of this temporary storage to match the life of the lease. And the conditions that were recommended are, one, that the storage structure be properly maintained, and two, that the storage structure be aesthetically pleasing in nature. The, the structure itself will be smaller than a tractor trailer. Roughly a small warming office type of area for people to be able to get out of the weather and keep their supplies for the driving training, such as cones and that, secured.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, the only, I, I fully support this, and it's, it's, to me, it's, it's a real credit to the, the applicant and to the management of the mall to get them, to get them using a space, Mr. President. You know, those of us that lived here for a bit, kind of, it's been this wide open gap in between Pier 1 and the railroad tracks. It's just been basically used for snow piles for the last 30 years, and filled with sand thereafter. And now, it's being actively used by, by the operator that, that moved their company across the river to back to Hoyoke. And they also, so they, they use that space, and they also leave space in the food court at the Hoyoke Mall, which continually, I mean, it's like a chameleon, and it has to be in this, in this, this marketplace. So, we're, we're, we're very, very happy. The only question we, we didn't have clarified, and, and I don't see the stopping it, but there was a question raised as to whether the, the ancillary structure being proposed is, is going to have any kind of a impact, you know, a, a tax thing. And, and I, I, I for one don't, don't think so, because I think that would be incorporated into the, in, that'd be part of their rent, and their, their, their rent is part of that. So, whether the assessor would make any kind of additional determination isn't clear. But to me, this is a, I, I think it's, it's just going to further enhance their operations, and I support it.
All right, just one, one thing, just to hold on. This is from the assessor. There would be a tax on the facility. It would go on as a yard item and measure the facility and grade of the structure and add as a shed metal or wood for tax purposes. Not sure if that answers it, but that's what came from the assessor's.
Okay, oh, okay. I didn't, yeah, I didn't get that memo. That's okay, so, but what?
Ryan, we got it today, so.
That's okay, that's all good. And then, so the, just so, just to clarify that, so the, the tax is levied upon the, not the business. Not, not, not this, not this vendor, but I would assume Pyramid Corporation, is that?
He's saying it's on the facility, so I would assume if they have the contract with them, we go back to Pyramid. But, I mean, you can always follow up with Tony, but he's saying there is a tax that will be due. So, whether it's with them or Pyramid, someone's paying it, so we can get clarification on it.
So, so I guess that email from the assessor should probably be forwarded to the council for, for the business. If Ryan could, could do that, that would be great, but I, I, I can't imagine it, well, slowing this down, so I, I support it, so thank you.
Counselor Bacon, you have a comment?
I'm all set. I was just wanting to say we had reached out to the assessor on that.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just going to speak in behalf of this. I, I, I think not only are they creating jobs, bilingual jobs, for teaching people how to drive these tractor trucks, which is so needed, there's a, there's, there's a huge amount of supply needed to drive these trucks. And not only are they teaching these people, the people who are getting, getting taught are now getting very high-paying jobs. You know, driving an 18-wheeler is obviously not an easy thing. So, I, I just want to say thank you for coming into the city of Hoyoke, and you know, the city of Hoyoke has to, or the mall has to repurpose because of, you know, Amazon and different ways. So, they're putting movie theaters in, bowling alleys, golf carts, whatever. So, I think this is a great fit, and I just want to say thank you, and welcome to Hoyoke.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, similar to what Counselor Leahy just said, I mean, I, I want anyone listening that is, knows somebody is looking for a job or is looking for a job themselves, this certainly is an opportunity to give yourself a, a good paying career. They do, they are provided bilingual training, and again, I would like to thank them. And, you know, they certainly came and made a, a positive presentation, and I'm all for it. But I want to encourage people that are unemployed out there and looking for jobs, here's a chance.
I, I, we also, as Mass Hire Hoyoke, work closely as a vendor. We're, you know, as you know, we secure the fundings for anyone who wants to go to training, and we have a great relationship, and it's opened a lot of opportunities for our region and, and our local economy. So, I, I, I support this effort.
All right, if there's no further discussion, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with conditions, the two conditions spoken.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leese?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote. You approve the special permit.
Mr. President, can we take up 11B through E, E as a package?
And I.
No, it's a denial.
Yeah, but you still just adopt the committee report.
Hold on, hold on. So, current motion is to take up 11B, C, D, and E.
I, I, I offer adding I to that.
And now, there's another motion to add on to B, C, D, and E, I. Is there a second to that? All right, so what do we want to take up, folks? Are we going to go one by one? There was no second to the first, or?
I'll second it.
So, so B, C, D, and E, or B, C, D, E, and I?
It doesn't matter.
All right, so adding I to it. B, so...
A lot of cooks in the kitchen.
Take up 11B, C, D, E, and I as a package. Suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
B, the committee on ordinance was referred a handicap sign at 136 Beach Street. Recommended that be adopted. C is that another handicap sign be at 15 School Street. Recommend that be adopted. Another handicap sign at the front of 149 Essex Street. Recommend that be adopted. 11E is that a handicap sign be placed at 156 Linden Street, apartment 2R. Recommend that be adopted. And 11I, ordinance was referred a handicap sign be placed at 156 Linden Street, apartment 1L. Let that be denied. And?
Motion of the committee reports?
Hold on, hold on. Let me look, make sure everyone's signed on. Okay.
So, the motion is to accept the recommendations of the Disabilities Committee?
Motion is to receive, adopt the recommendation of the Disability Committee with regards to all of them.
Correct.
Which is 1, 2, 3, 4. The first four is to adopt. The last one is to deny. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I just initially wanted to separate them, so there wouldn't be any confusion created between the ones that were approved and the one that was separately denied. But I think we've covered it adequately, so that it's clear for the public who may be watching.
So, for those who are at home, once again, 11B, C, D, E are to approve those handicap signs at the following location. 11I was to deny. And since these are, do we need a roll call for these, the handicap ones?
I believe we need to do these in ordinance form, so we need to pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second. Is to receive it now, pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be enrolled.
Motion is that the passage be enrolled. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all of these.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leese?
Yes.
McGee?
Excuse me. We need to...
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We need to reconsider our vote, because we can't do readings for a denial, only for approval.
Okay.
It's, that's why I wanted to do the fourth.
So, motion is reconsider our actions, take up 11B, C, D, and E?
Almost.
As one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is pass the first reading?
Pass the first reading?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be enrolled.
Motion that the passage be enrolled. Clerk will call a roll for 11B, C, D, and E.
Yes.
Tallman? Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leese?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote. You approve those. 11I, motion is to receive, adopt. The committee report that we deny sign at 156 Linden Street, apartment 1L. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you need a roll call for that one? Seeing as how it's denial or no?
No.
No.
I think you do. So, you're fine. All right, now we can go back to F. The committee on ordinance was referred in order that petition for notification process implemented regarding resident parking only requests such as petition notification process in place of speed humps via ordinance at the time. Proposed wording that no resident parking only be established except upon a petition to the city council signed by at least two-thirds of the property owners or two-thirds of the registered voters within the impacted segment, resident parking only street. Recommend that be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion is to, let's see, I'm trying to think if we have to do a first reading on this one. Yeah, so we need a motion to pass the first. It was, what we had before us in committee?
We do.
Was it in the legal form, I believe?
Yeah, we have the legal form attached to this one.
Okay, so the motion would be to pass the first reading?
Motion is to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So, there has been some confusion around permit parking, and there's been some administrative burdens relative to it. And also, we've recently had confusion about people who wanted to eliminate permit parking. And so, it became evident that it would be good to have a clearer process in this regard. So, a comparable type of situation that seemed to apply was that of the speed humps, so that we would ensure that there was a high degree of desire for the change to occur in the neighborhood before we go through the process of making these changes and setting up the systems, only to find out that people don't want them. I would note that in this ordinance, the decommissioning, if you will, or the undoing of the resident parking only would also be done in the same process. Public notice, hearing to undo it, so that way there would be the same type of notice taking place.
Any further discussion? Counselor Leese?
I, I would motion then that we proceed out of order suspending the necessary rules and take up 11H first, because the committee voted to eliminate the current resident-only parking ordinance that exists for Pine Street, because there was such a conflict, and really start the process over if there was a desire to have this sort of parking up, because really what we saw at the last time, the time prior to the last time when this was up in committees, that the majority of the residents on the street really didn't want the resident-only parking. But because there was this first mover advantage without the notification, the signs went up.
So, Mr. President, can we just suspend the rules and take them up together? And then we'll just act on H, 11H first? If we can take them as a package. We already have the one before us?
Second.
Motion is to take up 11H as well, but I think you have to act on 11H first to get rid of it, and then rein in the, the new. So, motion be to suspend the rules, go out of order to 11H. That's seconded. All those in favor? All?
Aye.
I have a question.
Counselor LeBron Martinez?
Before we vote, so, um, so previous orders that have been voted on with resident parking only, like around the Lyman Terrace apartment request, are then, are they be voided, or what, what's the deal with that?
No, this is only with regards to, 11H is just Pine Street.
Okay.
If you wanted others, you'd have to specifically mention them, and that has not appeared.
Right, but the ones that are in effect will remain in effect.
Right, they're grandfathered.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bacon had a question?
I'm all set.
Counselor Leese had a question? Nope. Anyone else? Okay, so for 11H, the committee on ordinance was referred in order that the resident parking only ordinance for Pine Street voted on recently be reconsidered and signs be taken down by DPW at this time. Several neighbors state that they were not notified of this change and are not in agreement with the ordinance as it is currently implemented. There is no official notification process at this time for resident parking only requests. Recommend that be adopted.
So, the committee recommendation and the motion would be to approve the committee recommendation, which is to remove the signs? There was a split vote in committee, because we had...
All right, so motion is to receive, adopt the committee report to remove the signs. Under discussion?
Correct. It was split vote in committee, because there was some feeling that the people who had come in under the previous process to get it removed, however, you know, went against them having followed proper protocol at the time. However, assuming we do implement the new procedure, it would be sort of a moot point, because then they'll just get the petition and come in and have them removed anyway. So, I think we end up pretty much in the same place regardless of how we do it at this point.
So, 11H, since it's a new ordinance, would be to follow the procedure, which we pass the first reading?
Well, 11H, in terms of removal, we, we don't really, we don't really have a process for removing it, but I guess since it is an ordinance, we would have to follow the same procedure to remove it.
Section 86, 106, parking permanent.
So, we'll have to have the first reading?
Yep. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion be to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to?
I guess that the passage be enrolled, but it's disenrolled.
Counselor?
Right, so I, I'm just going to make a, a brief comment. There's this, this one, there's one resident on that street who wanted the signs. It's in Ward 4. I spoke with the Ward 4 counselor. I said, listen, I'll, I'll support it, but I, I feel bad about this. This, you know, if I was living on a street and I saw a whole myriad of signs go up at one time in, in between Appleton and Essex, I would be upset too. Even though the process was, the, the process was followed correctly. The, the, the proponent went through the ward counselor. The ward counselor filed the order. Okay, so let's not pretend that that didn't happen. Ward counselor filed the order. We went through the legislative process, and we took the correct steps. To me, and we said it in committee, and the chairwoman and I both agree, I mean, I didn't vote for a committee, but, you know, I just want to move it along. I just wanna move it along, uh, I thought it was a small thing to leave the sign up from Appleton up a hundred feet, you know, so cover two houses, and she, and she could have resident parking there. I still don't see what the problem is, Mr. President, in doing that. Leaving the one sign, we could have resident parking only for the one thing. Yes, does that not exactly go according to the process? Okay, it doesn't, but could we do one small favor for one constituent who's a, I mean, a, a taxpayer and a, and a law-abiding resident of the city who doesn't, has never in my tenure asked for one thing ever other than, than a sign, so she could park. And bec- across the street, um, you have new development over there, uh, with Craig Vergilio's project, uh, which is gonna be a winner, but there's a lot of parking and, and it clogs up her street. Um, furthermore, she wrote me an email, uh, my gosh, it had to be seven hundred words, uh, about how since the signs have come in, there's been really, i- in her estimation, a vast improvement in, you know, fewer transients, um, more, you know, parking is, is ample. I, I would, I would rather us, you know, so will the body and whatever it is. If we want to just dispose it and just move along, go on to bigger and better things, yeah, yeah, there's all, there's always bigger and better things, and we heard about bigger and better things in executive session tonight, Mr. President, always bigger and better things. But this is one small house on one city block. It would not hurt anyone else on the whole street to leave the one sign up. Okay, is it according to Hoyle? No, Mr. President, it's not, but if we just wanted to take all the rest of the signs down, what would it hurt and leave the one up? Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, Counsel Bartley fleshed out the discussion, uh, more than I did. I probably didn't give it adequate review, but, um, there were two of us on the minority report in this regard, and we had sought since November to amend the ordinance and simply reduce the area. And when the majority of the residents came down to the microphone, it was my perception that they would be fine with the ordinance being amended and simply shrinking the permit, um, area. They just didn't want it down their end of the street, but they didn't seem to, um, object to it being at the other end. Um, we were given feedback that the one sign might be illegal. We don't have an opinion in that regard, so the minority report was that we would have preferred to amend the ordinance to reduce the distance one block at that end. Um, but nonetheless, the majority report was to do the whole.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we're on that. Eleven H would be a motion that the passage be ordained in order to...
Could I just ask, I'm, could I ask one question? Again, I'm just, and I, and I did, I know Counselor Bartley, uh, called me and asked me to go by, and I did go by, and I'm still a little confused as to, ooh, jeez. Not used to these mics in my young days. Uh, wh- exactly, is it one house, just one house on the left?
So the, the net effect, when we tried to meet the desire of the majority, to reduce the area, because of the logistics, the net effect was that one sign would remain. And the question was remained, is that legal? Well, we never had that question really answered as to whether it was or wasn't, but the request of the committee in November had been to get it in legal form, to modify the ordinance, to reduce the distance of the resident permit parking. We were trying to go for a win-win so that the majority would be happy and the person who properly petitioned and went through the whole process to get it would also remain happy. That was the goal.
So basically, the other residents wanted the signs removed, but they would have, from your, what they said to you before, they would have been okay with keeping that one?
My perception was they were fine if it remained down the other end. That was my perception at the meeting. And so, I mean, we amend, we can amend this if the body wishes.
Counsel Leesey?
Thank you. Um, I really don't wanna belabor this issue any longer than we need to, uh, but really, I think that your perception, Counselor Bacon's perception is off, um, because the residents that evening said, there's no reason to create a single parking space for a single resident on the street. This is...
Didn't know it would be a single.
Okay.
At that time.
They did. They, that was part of the conversation that we had, and they, they said this is, you know, we don't use government to create, uh, policies for individual residents. We create public policy, the way that the entire community is going to use our, our streets and public ways and lo- abide by the laws. And so, um, I would, I would argue that that perception is ro- off. Um, I did speak to a lot of the neighbors that were down here, um, after the meeting, and, and they really felt that, um, to create a single handy spot, uh, uh, sorry, a single parking spot would be, um, you know, gi- giving some sort of special treatment to one resident on the street. And I do agree. I think it's unfortunate that there wasn't a lot of outreach done in, uh, advance of crafting this ordinance, but that we, the way that the ordinance was, uh, written previously for resident-only parking, uh, it just gave first mover advantage to whoever came forward, forward and said, we want resident parking on the block without really having any sort of notification, um, or, or getting the block's input about what resident pa- resident-only parking would mean for the entire block. So, uh, I, I think if the individual resident who wants a parking spot, wants to have some sort of resident-only parking, then they need to take on the burden of initiating the process under the process that we just created with the notification, and, and they need to be the one that starts from scratch. That, that's where I'm at right now.
Counselor Bacon.
I will simply say in that regard, I will defer to the video, and we were referred by legal to and advised in the committee that there may be a legal problem with one sign. We do not...
So, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to, if I could, Mr. President, to amend our, amend our order and to leave that one sign up from, uh, Appleton, um, going up Pine Street a hundred feet.
Hold on, hold on, you have, you have two orders up current, well, the, the one that we're talking about, so we don't lead to confusion, was eleven H, which is, um, that the resident parking only ordinance for Pine Street voted recently be reconsidered and the signs taken down. You want to amend eleven H to read, taken down except for one sign?
And I'll second that.
The, the, the one sign from, uh, Appleton, well, it says on Pine Street, Mr. President, from the corner of, I, I guess that's the, the east corner of Appleton Street up, uh, Pine Street a hundred feet.
So e- say that again, so we have it written down correctly?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I hope I've got my directions right, but I believe that's the east corner of Appleton and Pine Street. From that point, heading, uh, uh, heading, uh, getting, yeah, south, thank you, good gosh, uh, a hundred feet, uh, going up, uh, Pine. So it would cover the two houses, including the, uh, the, the proponents.
So, the motion, the committee that, uh, Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that resident parking only ordinance for Pine Street voted recently be reconsidered and signs be taken down by DPW at this time, except for signs from east corner of Appleton slash Pine, heading south a hundred feet to Pine. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, heading south a hundred feet to, uh, Essex.
To Essex. Hundreds, a hundred feet to Essex.
Yeah.
Several neighbors state that they were not notified of this change and are not in agreement with, uh, the ordinance as is currently implemented. That is the motion. You're seconding it.
Yes, I second it, and, and, and to the point earlier made, the person that did initiate the approval of the ordinance did everything in the exactly proper manner. We are now in the process of reviewing to revise our ordinances.
Okay, so that is the ordinance with amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Oh.
Show of hands.
Roll caller. Show of hands has been asked for. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Yeah, we try.
Motion fails. Back to the original, which is without amendment, that DPW take it down at this time, with no exception. Which then that motion was on the table, it was back to motion that the passage be ordained, and that's where we stopped with comment. Any further comment?
Nope.
If not, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for eleven H as is no amendment.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
No.
Brezneren?
No.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leesey?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Eight yes, three nays.
With your vote, you're approved. Eleven H. That to eleven F, which was the Committee on Ordnance, who was referred in order that the official petition notification process be, uh, implemented for resident parking only. Uh, the proposed wording is that no resident parking only be established except upon a petition by the city council signed by at least two-thirds of the property owners or two-thirds of the registered voters within the impacted, uh, segment of the proposed resident parking only street. Have considered the same, recommended that be adopted, and legal form has been attached, so pass the first reading.
So, the motion to pass the first reading.
Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Um, I believe I gave a general summary already.
Okay, so eleven F, all those in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second.
Motion is pass the second reading. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be enrolled.
Motion is that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for eleven F.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leesey?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you're approved. Eleven F. Eleven G, Committee on Ordnance was referred, uh, the mayor amend the city ordinances and create a commission whose purpose is to consider all aspects of Whiting Street Reservoir. Uh, the charges of commission should be including, uh, reviewing costs of maintaining the reservoir and repurposing for its fu- future use, ensuring that the, uh, environmental considerations are maintained. Have consider recommendations, uh, or that be adopted.
So the motion is to pass the first reading, and this was an order filed by Counselor Bartley, so I...
Sullivan. Motion is to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
I'd like to defer to the makers of the order on this one.
With that, Counselor Sullivan or Counselor Bartley?
I'll go first.
Counselor...
You, you, we're just waiting for the legal form, right?
No, we have it.
We have it.
We got it, Mike.
We have it.
We have it.
So Counselor Bartley, did you not see the legal form?
I, I, I did.
Yeah, I did.
I wrote it with my Sullivan.
So Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, this is, this is something that, uh, I, I think the cities, the city, uh, apparently, uh, I, I mean, I wasn't aware of it till, uh, till recently. The, the city made a, a stab at this and their mayor, uh, Dunn, I think in nineteen ninety, ninety-one, there was a committee, and I, we'll, we'll at some point find, find the report and we'll get it to, if this passes tonight and we set, set, ordain this, uh, this commission, um, we'll get that in, in their hands. And, uh, I, I think we're just very, at least I'm very excited about it, um, Mr. President, to, uh, to set up what's gonna be a nine, a nine-person board, um, with, with the charge to see what we can do to, um, if anything, up at Whiting Street Reservoir. It's, uh, called the Whiting Street Reservoir Study Committee. Um, there are, uh, you know, it's a pretty, pretty wide-ranging, pretty wide-ranging committee with, with a lot of, uh, a, a broad expanse of, uh, of, of, uh, things that they can look at. A- among them are to ensure that this is a, in the back of their committee's minds, that this is an environmentally sensitive area. So we're not in any way saying in this ordinance that we want to do something in particular, but we want the committee, Committee of Holyoke Residents, and they're going to be either, uh, ad hoc, uh, members or, or they're gonna be at-large members. Three are gonna be appointed by the city council, one, uh, at-large by the mayor, and the other by, by virtue of their, uh, of their committees, including, uh, of the Water Commission. And, and this could be a real game changer, uh, miss, Mr. President, uh, when they come back with the report. I, I envision, uh, from this perspective, that we can have, just as we have with the CPA Committee, have applicants come in. I've already heard from a number of people. I know Counselor Sullivan is saying the same thing. There are a number of people interested in serving on the, on, on the committee, and that, that wanna have their voices heard. Whether they serve as members, they can, they, we certainly want to hear their voices in the, in the public meetings, and the committee, w- we, we hope will meet regularly, and then at the, at the end of a period of time, uh, no later than about a year or so, they will produce a report that'll be submitted to, uh, uh, the city clerk, and the city, and the city clerk will forward to the sc- uh, city council, and then we'll review it, uh, in, in one of our subcommittees, and we'll, we'll have a chance to, to talk out even further. What is the future of this huge expansive acreage right in the heart of Holyoke, where there may be some passive recreational or possibly, um, economic-related activities? And, but we don't know, Mr. President. We don't know because this has just sat dormant for how many years? Um, how many decades? And, and that now's, now's the time we felt, and I hope the, the city council get behind and the mayor will, will support it, uh, a- as well, that we can, we can move this along and, and, and hopefully have a, uh, and have some real economic and recreational opportunities up there and, and beyond, uh, beyond, um, sneaking in and fishing, beyond, you know, walking around, beyond sneaking in and, and riding your bike around there, um, beyond having the, uh, Holyoke Marathon run around there for, as part of their, as part of their, um, course. Uh, there, there just might be other opportunities that, that we're missing, and, and that's where this committee's gonna really come into play. And, and with that, I'll hopefully hear from, more from Mike Sullivan. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yep. Uh, no, Counselor Bartley summed it up pretty well. Um, we're, we're forced right now to spend two million dollars, uh, in the not-too-distant future on repair work up there. And if we're gonna spend that kind of money on something that's been dormant for twenty-five years, and will probably be dormant, uh, for the next twenty-five, fifty, uh, but we can't predict the future. Would we need it a hundred years from now? We, we don't know, but it's, it's something we wanna preserve, uh, it's something we wanna do something with, but putting this kind of money into it, we really ought to study what we could do with it in the meantime.
Anyone else? So the motion was to pass the first reading?
Pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is to pass...
Motion to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for, uh, the Whiting Street Reservoir Commission.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leesey?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you're approved. I do believe we're on to twelve, which is finance, there's no finance. Thirteen, public safety. Thirteen A, the Committee on Public Safety was referred in order...
Oh, Mr. President?
Yep, Counselor Bartley.
Just a point of order. Um, assuming the mayor signs this, uh, that what we just passed, uh, I, I, I think he will, I, I think the mayor's behind it. Uh, just through the chair to Counsel Leahy, uh, I think it would be important to set up, and I don't know how to formally, if we, do we have to set up, do I have to file, we have to file an order to set up, uh...
You'd have to set up for, in order to post advertisements for those who want to...
Okay, so we'll wait for the mayor to sign it?
Yep.
And then, then we'll ti- file another order to go before Counsel Leahy's committee?
Well, to advertise the positions...
Okay.
Through personnel, and then applications to be received and sent to the committee in order to have interviews.
So we can, so we can work, if I could, so we can work with Hector and Ryan?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, back to thirteen A, the Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that[1755.51] in order that either the Public Safety Committee or Development and Government Relations Committee meet with Representative of Women's Shelter Campaneros, Western Mass Elder Services, the Police Department, District Attorney's Office, Mayor's Office, School Department, staff from Representative Vega or Humison's office to discuss domestic violence with the following goals. Seek some money related to domestic violence for the money from the governor has added to combat violence in order to provide more direct one-on-one support. Seek ways to expand the number of beds available to abuse victims. Three, working with the Police Department and the District Attorney's Office, seek ways to reduce the potential to continue repeat offenders. Four, develop and promote monitoring opportunities for teenagers, especially to reduce the teen dating violence. Consider that has been complied with, there's only, oh yeah, the committee only has three members, so two signatures is enough.
Receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion, Council Bresnahan.
Thank you, I'll be brief, and I can turn it over to make of the order, but the Executive Director from Women's Shelter came in, representative from Western Mass Elder Care, John Hart was here, Dr. Zrych was here. And obviously DV, domestic violence is, is clearly a huge problem, and it was, it was kind of an eye-opener. This is a topic that is a little bit morbid, obviously, and not as, not as exciting as some of the other things we're going to talk about tonight, but the numbers are absolutely staggering. There's a lot of grants that they're working on, they have the Shannon Grant, they have a grant currently that they're working on to help. There's actually elder, domestic violence problems with people fifty years and over, because a lot of fifty-year-olds are, are raising grandchildren, so there's just a, what you wouldn't even think of, that is actually taking place as well in Hoyoke. The numbers that are going through the district court system across the street are staggering as well. It's, it's a great order, it hopefully will shed a little bit of light on, on the, on the problem that the city of Hoyoke is facing, as well as the, the area. Some of the things that were, that I thought were, you know, interesting is that we used to have a, an officer at the Police Department that only did domestic violence. That money is no longer available, so that person is no longer doing that work. Although there is a grant out there that, where there's a task force that comes out about four times a week through the Department of Mental Health that responds to these types of calls and works with them. One of the grants they're working with is not only working with the abused, but they're trying to work with the abusers of domestic violence to see, to see what, you know, why they are doing this. Everything that we know, the numbers are three times worse than what we actually know. And obviously, this is having a problem in the school systems because kids are growing up witnessing domestic violence. Truancy rates are a problem, and they're getting desensitized to this type of, these type of violence within their homes. So Dr. Zrych spoke about that, there's a guidance council within the school department that is working with Dr. Zrych to, to address some of these problems. But what I really got out of that is the collaboration, you know, with the Police Department, the Women's Shelter, Western Mass Elder Care, the Hoyoke Housing Authority, it's great. It's, it's an unfortunate topic that we have to deal with, but obviously, it's one of those topics that it's real and we can't just pretend it's not. You know, again, the, you know, we did, we just recently got a grant, and we were only nine in the country that were able to receive this grant, which is great news. And obviously, the downside of that is the numbers within the city of Hoyoke reflect such a problem that we are one of the nine communities within the entire country that received a grant to address some of the domestic violence problems that we're facing. I think something we really got to think about when we talk about spending money is actually, you know, funding an officer for domestic violence. Ramona, I believe was her name, years ago, wasn't Ramona, right, yeah, it was Ramona, and she was great, and, you know, called all hours, the night, day, night, weekends, holidays, she was always working. So it, it's just, it was a long, in a good way, eye-opener for us and for the committee. But I'll certainly let the, the maker of the order speak to this as well.
Council Murphy?
Thank you, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank Council Bresnahan, I appreciated the, the depth in the meeting, and Council LeBron Martinez, who also provided some good in-depth conversation. I also want to mention Sandy Donahue, who is from the school department, and is trying to address the issue with the kids that are coming from abused families in the school system. And I appreciated Dr. Zrych bringing her, so she was part of it. And again, yesterday, I did meet with Representative Vega about trying to get some of the state money that is, well, the governor has put some additional money in, and it's my understanding that the legislature, legislature is also putting some additional money in. And we talked about certainly money to provide advocacy, advocacy and counseling for victims. To look to see if there's a possibility of providing an additional shelter. The shelter is basically at capacity every day. The, and the potential of having a dedicated, dedicated police officer, which Council Bresnahan mentioned. Waiting for Carmen Neves from Women's Shelter to provide the statistics, but it, it definitely statistically has shown to have a tremendous impact on reducing the tremendous negative impact of domestic violence, and in many cases homicides that are averted by having a dedicated police officer. So there's a lot of obviously questions. It is something that goes across the spectrum, it is not an age thing, it is not a, it doesn't discriminate by age, by race, by gender. Domestic violence is a major problem, and whatever kind of funding and support we can get for those that are out there on the front lines, it would certainly be something that would be beneficial to the community as a whole. It would help, and we talked about the kids in domestic violence situations. Unfortunately, much more likely to become abusers themselves. And so it's a, it's a, it's a sad story, but it's a story that needs to be told, and we need to try to find whatever ways we can to improve the situation in this community and in the country as a whole. But I do thank Council Bresnahan, he ran a great meeting.
Anyone else? So motion is that the report has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirteen B, the Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that Director of Park and Recs and representatives from the Police Department meet with the Public Safety Committee, discuss past safety issues at South Chestnut Street Park, and plan for a safer program for both neighborhood youngsters and park employees. Recommend that has been complied with.
Receive and adopt the order.
Motion is to receive and adopt, under discussion, Council Bresnahan.
Briefly, Terry came in, she was great. There are some very major concerns in the parks. They have some summer activities that take place where college kids come into Hoyoke and, at this particular park, and they have the kids dropped off there, but there really doesn't seem to be any structure. So the Parks Department is making, making it seem a little bit more structured, where people have to sign in, participate with the program, it's obviously going to be free. One of the real problems for the parks, and she said last summer was terrible, were needles. To quote her, this is a major concern. The numbers are down for our kids attending the program. They had two shootings in this park last year during the programs. Thank God no one was hurt. Sergeant Hart spoke to this topic as well and said that he's well aware of the parks and the problems and the needles. There is a grant that was just received to allow for more of walking police patrols, as well as biking police patrols in the area of parks. Tapestry came up about whether or not they're coming in to do cleanups. Ed Case's name was mentioned, he has some volunteers that are helping out, so they're trying to address the needle problem. But that was one of their major concerns, obviously besides the shooting, was that the kids, you know, these parks, how they're being used at nighttime. Gladys had some great questions about whether or not the cameras were working, and they weren't working at some of these times, but they're hoping to get those back up and running again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Murphy?
Again, again, the concept of community policing and bike patrols and, and making sure they're funded. I mean, when I was on Parks Commission, they were talking about not doing programs in various parks because they couldn't get employees that felt safe in those parks, and if the employees don't feel safe, how can the kids feel safe? So, I mean, I, we do have to have a police presence. It doesn't have to be there all the time, but it certainly has to be there enough that it's a, it's a deterrent to people looking to do bad things in the park. Couple others, the people that were there were Superintendent McManus and Engineer Parent, and they both talked about potentially improving lighting and taking down some trees in some of the parks, or taking down branches of trees that prevented good lighting. So, you know, we're working on the problem, and obviously, we can't be in a situation where we close down parks because of criminal activity. We got to find a way to stop the criminals rather than stop the kids from playing in the playground.
Anyone else? Motion is that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirteen C, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that DPW Superintendent, City Engineer look into making the top of Hitchcock Street where it merges with Westfield Road safer. This would include possibly limiting parking on the south side of Hitchcock and eliminating or moving the PVTA bus stop, as well as trimming or ordering the removal of hedges at ninety-seven Hitchcock Street to allow for better visibility. Recommend that the order has been complied with.
Receive and adopt the order.
Motion is receive and adopt, under discussion, Council-
If I could, I would like to refer this to the maker of the order, because this is his word, and he's really in tune with the, the order.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very brief, the, the DPW went in, did a great job, cleaned it out, now the visibility's a lot better on that part. And then on the other part about the PVTA, DPW is reviewing all of the PVTA bus stops. I assume there's a lot of department in, in, in their expertise on this, but as, as has been made clear to us over the years, PVTA just put up stop signs while there's one at the corner of of Westfield Road and Hitchcock Street. There's been a PVTA bus going by there since I was a kid, so, so so I, I don't think the sign's legal, but it's, it's, it should be removed, and, and we should figure out a way to make that, make that corner a, a touch safer, and, and we'll, we'll work on that as time goes on. But removing what they did, removing all those hedges, has at least made the visibility, you know, which is a very tough intersection, somewhat improved, and I'm, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback on that, so thank you.
Didn't we approve an order to send the bill to the PVTA when we were saying that they put up illegal?
I think we did.
Make sure they send that bill.
I, I think we did, and, you know, PVTA, they're actually a good partner.
They are.
They are a good partner for the city, and it's, you know, Hoyoke is, you know, needs, needs a transit system that, that works and more efficient, but you know, we can't just put up signs for you.
Correct. All right, so the motion is that it's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirteen D, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that Public Safety Committee meet with representatives from the Police Department, the District Attorney's Office, Law Department, and the Building Commission, determine if buildings owned by certain landlords have a history of greater tendency of criminal drug activity than others. If that is the case, to discuss what legal means are available to hold the landlord fully accountable and improve the quality of life for those residents. Order has been complied with.
Receive and adopt the order.
Motion is to receive, adopt, that's complied with, under discussion, Council Bresnahan.
I thought this was a great order that was filed. Crystal did, did speak to it very well. There was someone that works in the Planning Department, Curtis, who, or the, what was the-
Curtis Wyman.
Yeah, Curtis, and he did a study on one particular building, and, you know, one seventy-three Elm Street is a real problem for the city of Hoyoke, and there will be some orders coming up to file on that one seven-three Elm Street. But, I mean, this, this, this block has, this is right down from the YMCA, it's got ten times more calls, police calls, than any other property within the city of Hoyoke. Ten times more police calls, and it was a problem, it's been a problem for years. It, it's, it's been an absolute problem for years. So we talked about, you know, legally what we can do to take that property, property over. I mean, if we can demonstrate that this property is having all these police calls, this violence, the shootings, the drugs, the arrests, you know, is there, is there a receiver that could take that property over? Obviously, receiverships, they need to have money. But, you know, some residents are absolutely afraid to call. They're, they come in from work, as, as Council Murphy pointed out, they park their car, they go into their, their apartment, they close the door, and they don't come out, so they got to go out to work the next morning. It, it'd be a horrible place to live, you know, if you were living that way. So we're, we're actively going to be searching how to address not only this particular problem at one seventy-three Elm Street, but any other, on any other properties, and we're going to be filing an order on one seventy-three Elm Street to have something done within the court system to make sure that one seventy-three Elm Street no longer has ten times more police calls than any other property within the city of Hoyoke. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
I suppose, I didn't get the address.
One seven-three Elm Street.
Is your mic on, Jim?
Do we know who the owner of the building is?
Yes.
Who is it?
I want to, I'm not going to hack up his last name, his first name, Lucian Horzenowski.
Horzenowski. I mean, have we contacted him?
Well, if you go to, if you go to Stop and Shop about ten o'clock at night, you'll see him scratching tickets right by the water.
So what's wrong with that?
Nothing, that's right. We got to, we got to support Jim's new gig. No, but he actually, when he came into Hoyoke, he's from New Bedford, he came into Hoyoke and he bought like ten, four properties from Rob McLaren. Years ago, I mean, I remember Mike, when he came into the, when he came in, came into the city of Hoyoke, Mike Sullivan was the mayor at the time, and I was in the Health Department, we went to meet the guy, because he just bought about five hundred units in the city of Hoyoke, and he was never a landlord before in his life. And he's struggling, I can tell you that.
Council Murphy?
Yeah, just, and again, that was a pretty eye-opening when we started to get the statistics, and I appreciate Attorney Burns and, and, and Mr. Wyman presenting those, and, I mean, it goes right along with, when I had the meeting with the Chief of Police when I first got back involved, and, and he talked about there are just certain buildings that are certain landlords, and it was plural, that are just constantly causing problems. And that we, we need to make sure that whatever means we have, we take. And, I mean, I, I'm a relatively patient old man, but it's time that some of these landlords that are just taking their money and not providing a safe environment for their people to, residents to live in, be held accountable. And if it means we take their property or whatever, whatever authority we have, so that we provide safe places for all of our residents, then that's what we need to do. And I do appreciate the information, because it certainly supported what the chief had told me.
Council Lisi?
Thank you. To the committee and anyone else who was present that evening. So receivership isn't an option for these buildings, it seems, but are there other, are there other options that we have? Other courses of legal action that we have?
There have been properties that have been taken over through the receivership program due to crime, and, and, I mean, you just have to present a solid case. But, I mean, you know, years ago, the guy used to have bulletproof glass in the front of his doors because people would shoot him out. There was a kid that was shot through the eyeball just walking down the street from a window years ago when I, when I worked for the city. That, that building's been a problem for years. I mean, they, they've cleaned it up, they put that little dominoes or whatever, that pizza joint, so there's like more lights, it's a little brighter. But, you know, the church next door is now vacant, I mean, that's a, that's a very, very tough block. And if you go inside the building, there's a whole, all the porches on the inside meet each other, and it goes straight up like this. It's just a, it's a very, it's a very unique building. It's, it's actually represented as condos. There's sixty beds in there, and it's, it's just a, it's a nightmare to get called into there from a, like a code, like, you know, Damien, a code inspector going into this building unarmed, you know, it's, it's not good. And they, they have elder, I mean, from years ago, they would have the elderly's watching on the first floor, watching. As soon as somebody that was not a member that, you know, walked into the building, they were getting paid money, and they would just call upstairs and say, hey, you know, there's, there's somebody that doesn't live here is walking in the front door, and then that apartment on the fourth floor would, would, would get away with, you know, hide everything and, and go to a different unit. I mean, it's, 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 it's not brilliant, but it's just like the strategy that they're using. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a fortress. You know, you can't get in there, you can't sneak into this building, because they'll have the lookouts on all the first floors, and the owner's probably getting paid cash, he doesn't care. They're not calling the code department to complain about the problems, because they don't want them in the building. I mean, it, it's, it, it's a tragedy, really, and it's sorry, because there probably are some hard-working people that are living in there that are just held hostage. They got nowhere else to go. So we definitely have to, and we're going to be filing an order about this particular building, and, and, you know, call him in or see what we can do about it, because it just, we can't allow it to happen any longer.
Council Anderson Burgos?
I'm very, I'm thoroughly impressed with this order. Born and raised in Hoyoke, I know what it's like to live in these buildings. And to live in fear that if we mentioned any drug activity or pointed a finger at a specific person that you will, you will be dealt with. So I think that, you know, these landlords shall be, should be held accountable, because it is costing the city, one twenty-three, one twenty-three Elm Street?
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three Elm Street. So we should, we should hold them accountable, because it's costing the city a lot of money. And these people who do work and, and are in fear for their lives should not. And I'm glad that this body is really thinking about this and, and that we move forward and, and help out the city. That's why we're here.
Anyone else? So motion is that this order has been complied with to then be followed up by several orders on one seventy-three Elm Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thirteen E, Committee on Public Safety was referred in order that the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, City Engineer, and someone from the Police Department meet the Public Safety Committee of the city of Hoyoke, discuss the continued problem of excessive speeding on Main Street from Springdale Park to the traffic light going on Route Five. One of the goals would be to set up a speed humps, if possible, on the street before Dean's Crosswalk on both sides of the street, another would be to have more radar enforcement at random times. In addition, please consider posting electrical signage for drivers on their speed. Recommend that the order has been complied with.
Receive and adopt the order.
Well, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need people to- We need people to sign it.
Did I sign it?
No signatures.
I had a good seat.
Two members have signed off, the motion was that the order was complied with, our discussion, Counselor, President.
Thank you, Mr. President, we all know where Main Street is, coming from West Springfield, down past Dean Vocational, and we all probably go much faster than the speed limit allows, it's a 9,000-foot corridor. Getting folks to slow down is very difficult, Dr. Dreik spoke about this, the police was here as well. The speed limit is 35, it just doesn't happen that way, we talked about putting the rumble strips on certain sections of that area, especially in particular by the school, because now that we're gonna see Dean Vocational having a larger population of schoolchildren, it's really something that we gotta, need to look at closely, you know, we had the problem with the car wash, with the drag racing, I believe Mark Ford purchased that, so that might have toned things down a little bit. But there's 11,000 vehicles a day that are going on that, and that was from 2016, so they're estimating that there's probably more. Right now, there's about 150 students at Dean Vocational, in the next few years, they're hoping to get it all the way up to 500. So, we need to look at or talk more about, you know, how to, at a minimum, make that area from West Springfield coming into the school system of Dean Vocational, a much safer area for drivers, flashing signs was one option, but it's, getting people to slow down is a difficult task, but I'll, again, you know, defer to the maker of the order.
Again, everything Counselor President indicated is what they're looking to do. I did communicate with the Chief today, they are gonna up the radar patrols, trying to catch as many people as possible. We've suggested that they do it at a variety of different times so people don't get a pattern and they know they're there one time but not another. Superintendent, Dr. Dreik has really indicated he would really like to have the school zone traffic lighting, and we also talked about not only traffic lighting there, but in all the schools, and we've been talking about that, and he's trying to look into getting more school zone traffic lighting for all of our schools. And also, the rumble strips were mentioned, there was concern what happens if we, you know, end up with plowing and things along, what kind of damage that might do to the street, there was some talk about that. But the idea was that if we put them probably at 90 feet on each side of Dean, basically, we'd be about the halfway point and there would be at least two particular portions where hopefully people would slow down once they realized the rumble strips were there. So, those are the things we're trying to do, again, it is, I mean, obviously, I've lived there, but, I mean, literally, there are 60, 70, 80 miles an hour people, and it's a heavily residential area down in Ingleside and in Springdale. So, at some point, I don't actually recall an accident where I've heard of anybody being killed, but there's a lot of accidents and there are close accidents when people are coming down St. Vincent Street, and now that we have some middle school students at Dean and they're crossing the street to get to their rides from their parents, again, with the speed and there's no light that says 20 miles an hour of school zone or anything like that, there are people that are going by pretty quickly. So, I do appreciate the meeting, I appreciate all the people getting involved, and Superintendent DPW and Engineer, plus the Police Department and the School Department, all in favor of trying to do something. So, hopefully, we'll reduce the speed somehow, some way, and make it a little safer neighborhood and a safer school.
Anyone else? Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's great that they took this up, this committee, I know there's been a number of years that's been problems down there, especially with the drag racing and the kids and the speeding there, and I think the electric, you know, lighting, you know, that, we see in a lot of areas, some of the communities, like going over South Hadley, that flashing, you know, you're going 35, you're supposed to be going 30, and those are great, I think, you know, your speed limit is this, if we can get a couple of those, and I think around the schools, we do have some, not all schools, but about the 20, I believe it's 20 miles per hour flashing during school hours. But I really commend the committee for taking this up and try to make this, this area of the city, which is, it's a gateway into Hoyok, safer.
Anyone else? Counselor Martinez?
I'm, I don't know, I'm just thinking that every time, it's like everything is more like an issue that it's about enforcement, you know? I remember when the issue at Kmart, that entrance there that you're not supposed to take a left, not until a lot of people got pulled over and cited, I'm not asking, you know, saying you have to ticket them, but cited them, the word got out, don't do it, don't do it, you're gonna get pulled over, you know what I mean? So, I think there's more of that needs to be done than more signs and some, some of these are costly because they said it was like $10,000, I think it is, to put one of those blinking lights, those lights around? And I was one who actually asked for one by Kelly Street because that hill up by Kelly Street, it's a racing site and there was a killing, you know, somebody actually got killed there due to some racing that went on and hit somebody with a motorcycle years ago, and I remember then, they told me it was like $10,000 to put one of those blinking lights. And the reality is, if we don't enforce it and those blinking lights are there and people are still gonna pursue their speed limit, it's not, I don't know, just my thought, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, Glass makes an excellent point, you know, even today, I know this police officer from South Hadley is retired, if I'm going to South Hadley, whether the speed limit or below it, I still slow down. Because for five years to six years, there's always a police officer from South Hadley, and so, when you see that all the time, you're going, you're going to do it, so I think that you're on to something.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I agree that enforcement is part of it and that's one of the things we're trying to do, and I, I'm almost positive and that the Superintendent indicated that there was money coming in for traffic lights and it was a major funding source coming in and that he was going to try to use some of that for the school zone areas so that we would in fact have all the school zones as much as possible with the 20 mile per hour speed limit. And it does have to be enforcement, and that's, you know, Chief has indicated they're gonna try to do more enforcement down there, and you're absolutely right, because if you go over the Mother Bridge into South Hadley, whether you ever got a ticket or not, you still take a look because you're assuming there's gonna be a police officer there, so.
Anyone else? Order is that it's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's no public service, no DGNR Charter on Rules 16A.
Suspend the necessary rules to take up item number 23 out of order.
So, suspend the rule, go to item 23. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 23, the Annual City Council approved the recommendation of the CPA Committee in a order grant in the amount of $75,000 for the restoration of stained glass windows at the City Hall, Historic Commission, DPW and Friends of City Hall.
Need to make a...
So, motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Mr. President?
Counselor Vacan?
Thank you, I just have a point of order or a point of information. Given that this particular committee has a unique and legally defined function relative to making these recommendations, would we be in order with our council rules, I just haven't been able to find, to take all of their recommendations and act on them without them having to go to one of our committees since they were legally charged with making these exact recommendations? Because there's about five of them.
No, you are correct, the only one that has an order or a rule associated with it is the Committee on Ordinance where you have to send it to the Committee and you can't take it up that night on a first rule. For financial transfers, which is what this would be, you can suspend the rules and act on it that night. We've done it with grants coming in last minute, but it's up to the will of the body to say, since it's new, it's the CPA. All of them should go to the Committee to then be addressed in accordance to the recommendations to see why it was recommended over someone else and then ultimately sent out as a full report. I do believe, what Counselor Sullivan is going to tell us in a minute, there is a time constraint with regards to this specific one because it's the stained glass windows.
Yes.
That's why it's an act of trying to go out of order to do it outside of what we should be doing.
Yes, and I am aware of that, and I'm not suggesting that we're doing anything wrong by going out of order, I'm actually more advocating that we would entertain the recommendations of the committee without it going to Committee because these, this group has spent hundreds of hours on this, I did go to the public meetings to hear all of the different applications that came forth in the public portion, but prior to that, this committee has spent many, many hours on this and they've vetted all the different applications and this is what they're recommending to us. So, I would just say to my colleagues that I would feel comfortable moving on their recommendations without us sort of doing it again, if you, if you will, but I just wondered, I wanted to just see if it was in order with our rules.
You would be spending...
I just have a question in regards to, through the chair, so, we have these orders in front of us, do we have, I don't know what the final amount is, now, if we divided it by five, are they all going to get a piece of this?
Counselor Sullivan can get, remember, Counselor Sullivan is our appointed member of the Council to update us, remember, it is something new, the CPA for us, we took it on, the money's finally collected, they have been meeting with regards to several items and Counselor Sullivan is here to update us, so I will turn over to Counselor Sullivan.
So, as an update, not specific to this one order, there will be other ones coming forward out of the Committee. These are the ones that have been passed forward for your consideration so far. Any of them that you would want to send to Committee, I'm fine with, any we want to work on tonight and get through, I'm prepared to answer most questions.
So, if a one comes up that we're interested in, now we vote on one of these tonight, are we not gonna be able to do the ones that we haven't seen yet?
Well, it's not us, the Committee, the CPA Committee, right, knows how much money they have left to work with and it's what they send forward, I don't believe there might be one more coming forward, but I believe that right now, not all the money in CPA is gonna be spent this year. Unlike CDBG, we're not under the HUD guidelines and the scrutiny, it just rolls over till next year and builds up in that, in that particular fund.
Can you tell us what's in the fund now as a total?
And what the state gave us?
These are just really rough numbers, but I believe there's 900,000 in the fund, there was a little over a million. I think we've got 900 and we got about 300 from the state, now, I could be off on that, I don't have exact numbers on it. I can tell you to specific each project, though.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor? Counselor Lacy?
Thank you, I was just wondering if there is a desire on the part of the CPA to do some sort of presentation to us as a group or in Committee, or do they really just feel like they are moving things forward to expedite the process and now it's in our hands?
They said I'm prepared to answer most of the questions, I've been at all the CPA meetings, if one of them gets too complicated, we can always send it to Committee if we want to.
I guess it's more...
They're pretty straightforward.
I guess it's more like, you know, was there any desire on their part to say, you know, in a bigger sense, like what were they considering, what they have as priorities, what came?
They sent them forward because they had approved them and all of these went forward unanimously, so.
Okay.
And is there a timeframe with regards to any of these, all of these?
A couple of them, the most important one is this 123 that's in front of us right now. The Hoyok Boys Club would also be a good one because part of their project, if they could get started right away on it, they would be able to hold their summer camp there this year, I need to lay on it, they might not be able to have a summer, even though they get the work done, it might not be in time for the summer camp.
Item 24 taking up with item 23 then, under suspension of the rules?
I think we all received emails from the Boys and Girls Club, of which I, I didn't, they wanted me to forward things out to the full Council and stuff and I didn't know if that was proper through the CPA, because lobbying for money and since I didn't know the rules associated with it, the recommendation's here, so now it's here, I guess we can, we can talk about it. And I do believe everyone else received those emails as well, so we can take up 24 as well if you want.
So, Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules and take up all of the recommendations from the CPAC, 23 through 29 for possible action tonight.
The motion is to take up 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29.
In light of the fact they were 100% recommended from the Committee, so we're not getting a divided recommendation.
Okay, I just give a point of interest, too, I just talked to Crystal and I do serve in the Hoyok Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors, however, I get zero financial gain, and she said that it was...
As long as you disclose it, you're fine.
And I'll second Counselor Vacan's motion.
Alright, so, the motion is suspend the rules, take up 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, so 23 is, hold on, let me just read these so the public knows what we're talking about. $75,000 for the stained glass windows, we just told you that one. $359,689 for the Hoyok Boys and Girls Club, which would replace the outdoor basketball court bleachers, construction of pavilion, playground improvement, splash pad, and green space located to Newton and Nick Cosmos Way. 25 is $177,900 for the Goldac, am I saying that right, Woods Conservation?
Lutak.
Lutak, Lutak, okay, I was close, maybe not. Consistent of 52.5 acres of undeveloped land. $500 for the City Hall Annex lanterns. $5,300 for gravestones at Smith's Ferry Cemetery. $50,000 for 348 Chestnut Street, pointing and, pointing and facing, so. Last one is $50,000 for window work at 337 Chestnut Street. Motion would be to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
I'll second that.
Ready? It's all yours.
Okay, so, 23 is the stained glass windows here, oh, well, first of all, I've gotta make an amendment to three of the orders.
Do it as you go through them.
The amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the amendment for 23 would be to strike Historic Commission as one of the sponsors of the order. They approved the project, but they're not one of the sponsors, only DPW and Friends of Hoyok City Hall are the sponsors. The, this one's pretty clear, we've already restored three of the stained glass windows. This would take care of three more of the stained glass windows, it involves a matching grant from the state for $75,000. The reason for, to move quickly on this is the state has a deadline of March 22nd, if we don't get it in really by the 21st.
Did we already accept that grant?
Uh, no, that was on a, I believe that was on a previous one.
So, we've already accepted that grant, though, just to make sure, and this is our match to that grant?
I'm not sure on that, according to what I've been told here, this, that was already used on the first three, on the first three windows. This is for the next three windows.
That's fine, okay, we're on.
And the deadline on that is the 21st, 22nd, we really have to get it in by the 21st. I've already talked to the mayor about it, there's a, on all of these orders, he's supposed to have seven days to review, but the other ones, he can wait, even if we pass them forward, they require his signature, and this one, he is in favor of and ready to move on it tomorrow if the body so desires.
So, the amendment for 23 would be to remove Historic Commission.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, 23 has removed Historic Commission from the language, you had discussion for any of the other ones, or?
Do we want to, we're gonna take these one at a time?
We're taking them up as a package.
Okay, alright, so, the next one would be the Boys Club. This is a two-phase project, one is for the playground and the other's for the basketball court. The playground's a little more than that, it's got splash pad and all this, that's... That's the part that is tied to the summer camp program. The basketball court is twenty-four years old now, in dire need of replacement. All you've got to do is take a ride by. It's amazing the kids can even play basketball on it. It's, this one, we feel it's, the three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six eighty-nine is a large figure, but that's what they had to do. We're still unclear. It'll definitely come in under that amount. How much, we can't say for sure. We're still waiting to hear from Stuart Saginaw. This one in particular, since it's the Boys Club that will be contracting the work, may not be subject to prevailing wage. All these estimates, pricing estimates are based on prevailing wage. And there's also a section of this that would involve a demolition, where we may be able to do the same thing as what was done with the Puyallup Pool. And that would also save ten or twenty thousand dollars. So, even though we approve this large amount, there's a very, very high probability that it won't be spent, and that just goes back to the CPA fund, so.
Twenty-five?
Okay. Twenty-five, this is Glutac Woods. It's a section of property out in Rock Valley, fifty acres. It's currently in arrears in its taxes by roughly eighty thousand dollars. So, by taking this, eighty thousand of that money would be coming back to the city. There was quite a bit of discussion about it. We are, as you know, we already have six thousand acres of available open space, so we'd be using money to acquire even more open space. There has been strong support out in the Rock Valley community. The other interesting features, Kestrel Land Trust would be overseeing this. So, fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand of the money goes to Kestrel Land Trust to put a permanent restriction. Permanent restriction means once you do this, it's forever. This can never be developed. The property owner, there's been some research done as far as development goes. It'd be an uphill battle for any developer. There's wetlands, there's wildlife habitat. There's going to be other parties interested in objecting to any type of developments out there.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, a small amount, it's five. Once again, on this one, we'd have to amend it also. Should I make that motion now?
Yep, what you amended.
Once again, same deal. Historic Commission reviewed this and approved of it, but it's the Hoyok DPW that is the sponsor of it, not the historic.
Motion that we remove Historic Commission from it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, that has been removed.
So, this is five hundred dollars. This is for the restoration of the lanterns at the City Hall Annex. That's it.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, this is, again, we, a motion to remove Historic Commission. They reviewed it and approved of it. The Smith's Ferry Cemetery is actually maintained by the Hoyok Parks and Recreation Department. There's a lot of historic markers there that tie back to Hoyok's early days. Some of the gravestones are in pretty bad shape, and this is for fifty-three hundred dollars for the restoration of gravestones there.
So, you're making the motion to remove Historic Commission again from this one?
Correct.
Now, we seconded, all those in favor? All opposed? And twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, this is Voces de Esperanza. And this one is facade work at three forty-eight Chestnut Street. It's a much bigger project. It's a, the fifty thousand dollars is to get them going. It opens the door for them for sizable grants, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for work on this building. The facade part, the committee thought, was really vital. If you drive by there and look, it's a pretty unique building as far as apartment blocks in Hoyok. It's a combination of red brick and yellow brick, the lower portion being yellow, the top being red, with yellow trim around. To get started on this right away, as we know what happens with facade work that's neglected, it doesn't have a good outcome. The building is occupied currently. It's, this part of it, since it's outside facade work and visible to the public, was part that qualified under historic preservation.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine was also the same group, Voces de Esperanza. This is another group that's apartments that are right across the street from there. The city redid these, I think, twenty, twenty years ago. They're adjacent also to the Churchill Homes, which are very well-maintained. They, at the time, the facade work and the window treatments were not properly done. And as a result, they've started to rot now, and the facade peel off. So, it's, right now, these homes are occupied, but there aren't really funds available for this kind of work. And the committee also, the same thought, this would be good for that neighborhood.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. With that, I know they sent us an email on filing these, getting these done. Was there a timeframe for all of them? I know the stained glass window was one, but they all wanted this done prior to a certain timeframe, correct, or?
Yeah, the others, only twenty-three and twenty-four are that time-sensitive. The Glutac Woods, I believe that there's a May twenty-second deadline on that, and none of the rest of them really have.
And with this set, is there going to be more coming in before the end of the year? Or what is the next timeframe for the next batch, if there's going to be a next batch?
The next batch could be within the next two weeks, but I believe there could only be one more coming forward.
Okay. Any questions for Counselor Sullivan?
I just got a question. Voces de Esperanza, who's actually managing the buildings right now?
Not a hundred percent. I believe it's Valley, I believe Valley Opportunity Council.
Okay.
Counselor Veken?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a comment and commend the committee for their work. I was able to attend the public meeting, and the presentations that were made that night were very thorough. They were each compelling in their own way. So, I really commend the work of the committee, and I know they did a lot of due diligence in making these recommendations to us. So, I hope that we will approve them tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Murphy?
Just one question, and I haven't been getting any emails, so I'm not sure of all what you're talking about there. But I got a, I don't have any problem with any of these things, but I wonder, are there proposals that were rejected? And if so, what they were?
Yeah, there are proposals that were rejected. I'm having to do this off the top of my head. There was three in for seed money for developer incentives for the train station, the Armory, and I believe one twenty-three Pine Street, the Alpine Building. There was, there might have been a few others also.
Could I just ask a question on the Armory? What was, what was the request regarding that?
For each of those, I believe it was a hundred fifty thousand for developer incentive.
Counselor Martinez?
Yeah, was there one on Maple, on Maple Street? The row houses on Maple Street? Was there one there?
Yeah, that one's, and that one's still in committee. That's for facade work on the front and back of some of the row houses across from...
The library.
The library.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I did receive emails for a few of these, and I support all of them. I think the committee did their due diligence in getting this. This is the first round for us to see. That's why it was, if you wanted to go to the committee or not. But, you know, I do agree with Counselor Veken, they have done all the legwork. It would be nice to have the committee come in to the full council to see if there's any process. But I think with regards to these, I am more than comfortable in voting for these and getting them off and running. Counselor Bartley?
I agree. I wanted to, I'd like to move these along tonight. And then I was, especially in light of what I just heard from Counselor Sullivan, that they rejected, I mean, really, the committee, again, team of volunteers, city workers, and then the, those who came in were applied through our, 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 our part of the process. I really want to thank them because they put the time in. Of course, Counselor Sullivan put in a lot of time as our representative, so he should be commended for an excellent committee report. I just think that we, though, though, this shouldn't be the norm, Mr. President. I, this is the first time. I think we should have a pretty, you know, I don't want to hear this every time they come in. You know, we've got to get it done. Well, you know, that's not how it should work. It, that's not how we envisioned this thing. So, you should file an order, and this is, yes, it's a financial transfer. It shouldn't be done on the floor the night of, and just because they got a deadline. Well, they knew they had the deadline. So, and they knew they had a deadline months and months ago, when they had the, the deadlines didn't just pop up, Mr. President. So, they knew. And it shouldn't just be dropped on us out of the sky. And so, I hope this is the last time that that would happen. That being said, these are all world, you know, very worthy projects, and it sounded like all worthy projects. Just two of the small points. I hope this is not going to be like CDBG world, where it is the same applicant year after year after fifteen years, and twenty years in a row. Holy cow! At some point, you know, so let's just, let's just take note of who these are. I mean, there's only six of them, so it shouldn't be that complicated. One vendor, looks like they're going to get two. But this is not going to be a feeding frenzy for, in my, in my estimation, it shouldn't be. And then the last point, Mr. President, is that I would like to see this, you know, it can either go to finance or DGR, I don't care. But we should, I think we should establish it. I think, you know, Joe were here, he'd be just as happy, and I'd be just as happy, too, to take him on, so. And then, and then both those committees regularly meet, and so it's not like it'd be a delay. They each meet once, at least once a month, so we, the turnaround would be pretty reasonable. And in committee, you can sort of flesh out some of the questions I think the others have been asking with the CPA members, those that are able to come. Because I'd like to get some, I mean, I'm great hearing from Mike, who I put a lot of faith in, but I'd just like to get a perspective from another committee member, too.
Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. I just want to kind of echo some of the sentiment that's out there and say, I think we should have, I mean, happy to move this forward tonight, but I think in general, the process should be that we get some sort of presentation from the CPA group. I understand that their meetings are public, and we could all attend to them, but it would be great to have, you know, some sort of like final presentation. These are the priorities that we wanted to move forward on for this, you know, fiscal year or this round of funding. And this is what, you know, this is what we were thinking. So, a little bit more of the like reasoning and rationale behind some of the decision-making, what they kept on the table, what they kept off the table, and why.
And a final accounting, too, so we have the numbers before us. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. And first of all, I do want to say, Mike Sullivan, fantastic job. Everybody else on your committee, fantastic job. I've gone to several of the meetings early on, and it was very well-organized, very well-run by these volunteers in the city. So, my hat's off to you guys. And I'm ready to vote on all these. I made my declaration earlier. I, too, would like to see some sort of presentation. Myself and Counselor Bartley, we filed an order in regards to grants, and finding out exactly, you know, the who, what, where, and when, and some of the outcomes. So, I think that would be who of us to do something similar with this as well, and find out exactly how much did the city raise? How much did the state kick in? You know, where that account is, what interest rate we're getting on that account, and some of those facts and figures as well. But thank you. My hat's off to all of you guys.
Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, I have no problem voting on these tonight, but I do think in the future, maybe we could send to the committee and to get a presentation on this. I did also receive several emails and calls of a couple of these items, especially, I talked to somebody just the other day on Sunday at the Boys Club about this project down there, which I think is very much needed. And did get a couple emails about the Glutac Woods Conservation Land. So, I'm very much in favor of this. But like I said, I'm on both the finance and DGR committees. I think it would be good, next time, with the next round, to have people come in and get an idea of what these projects are for, and why these, where these projects are meant to, why they made the cut, you know, and how the money is spent, how the money's brought in, how the money is spent, you know, on a yearly basis.
Even this year, I hope we could have them in, like, post hoc.
It appears there might be one more, so we'll hold that one hostage. No, just kidding, just kidding.
There will be one, maybe two more. And as a matter of fact, I'll be glad to file another order to invite them in.
I'll co-sponsor that with you.
Don't do a late call. It's nine o'clock. All right, so motion is to pass the first reading for twenty-three to twenty-nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading.
Second?
Clerk call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all of them.
Sullivan?
Let me think about that. Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Veken?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approved all of them. Back to Charter and Rules? Sixteen A. Committee on Charter and Rules was referred. A resident petition in support of a non-binding ballot question as to whether HG&E should offer fiber optic internet for purchase by residents. Petition was HG&E to conduct a feasibility study. Recommend that the non-binding question be approved, signed off by all members.
Make motion, the committee report be approved?
Motion as to the city, the recommendation that be approved for a non-binding ballot question. Our discussion, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I mean, the constituents who put the petition together did come. A couple of them came and testified. We also had Jimmy Lovell in to talk about it. And clearly, the G&E is doing certain things, and I was hoping that maybe that would satisfy the petitioners. But they would like to see us go to the voters and see what their opinion is. And I did talk to Mr. Lovell after the fact, just to make sure that we would still be in a cooperative relationship. And he thought it would just be additional information he would get, but they're already working to do these things. It would just give him a gauge of what the public opinion is on it. So, he had no problem with going to the ballot in November.
So, that's what I was going to ask you, because it's missing from the committee report. It was voted that it would be in the November ballot.
Correct.
So, have considered the same, recommend that the non-binding question be approved for November ballot? That was missing from there, just so everyone's aware of that. Counselor Veken?
Just if I may, through the chair, to our clerk. I just do want to understand if it puts a lot of burden and a lot of extra cost to add it to the ballot? We didn't really get that information in committee, if you know, I mean.
It doesn't really add any additional monies to the ballot printing.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. So, what I'm going to do, so we continue on my role...
Is your mic on?
Mic. Continue on my role of two different ways of doing this. So, I did ask Crystal, I'm allowed to speak on this. It's not a conflict of interest. But, you know, you had twenty, around twenty people who asked for this. Some of them, they couldn't find the addresses, some you could. And so, now you have twenty people that are asking to do something, and yet it seems like the majority of the people are going to put this on the ballot. Whereas, the right way, and the proper way, the procedure, is to go out and get signatures. You know, I think, I think Mr. Lovell made it clear that we're the position in committee, where the gas electric stands, and how much it would cost. He said up to twenty million dollars. We're talking about building two middle schools, and exactly, you know, where the city would get that funds. I'm not sure. But he did pretty much answer all the questions the two citizens spoke about at the microphone today. But that's not my issue. My issue is just doing it the right way and getting signatures. Thank you.
Anyway, Counselor Bartley?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would I, and I'm not, I don't know what offline conversations counselors had, but the GNE manager said he opposed it on the microphone. Now, that was clear. He said, "I oppose it." So there might have been an offline conversation, but in public meeting, he didn't, he didn't support the ballot question. And he said so because, because the GNE has already said, gone and said that they support this. And he said, didn't say 20 million, he said $30 million for the rollout. He said, "We collect data all the time." Now, I don't have a problem putting, especially in light of what the, the city clerk just said, it's not, it's not a cost thing. But I think what, what, what the Public Service Committee here just said is, is a good point in that, in that, I'm, I'm in no way denigrating the petitioners here. But whether 28 or 32 or whatever, but every time, we're going to get 28 or 32 signatures coming in, we're, we're going to put a, not minimizing anything, but is that going to happen all the time? And where's the ballot language? What am I voting on? Is this it, right here? Is it going to be the way the order's written? I don't have the ballot language in front of me. So I, I, I think that, that a lot of this is, I mean, what I heard that night, I, they're very well-meaning people, they've been before us now several meetings, and they have a position. I think the GNE manager answered their questions affirmatively that night. Yes. We want to do it. The answer is yes. You know, I'm not, how many times, how many times you have to get a yes? I mean, you got to accept it at some point. So it's, it's, you know, great, we can take, we can take the pulse of the city. Does, does, does the city, I mean, you can answer all sorts of questions, but I, I don't, I don't really see the, the need to do this other than, other than to satisfy whatever, the constituency. But I, I, I will support it, Mr. President, but I don't, I'd rather just have the, the legal, the ballot question. We generally have the ballot language question in front of us.
Right here, it's part of the petition.
Okay, well, I don't, okay, what is it?
A yes vote supports HG&E offering fiber optic internet for purchase by residents and implores HG&E to conduct feasibility studies for a gradual rollout. The findings of the study are to be presented at the city council meeting by April 2022 or sooner. It's a non-binding ballot question with regards to that question.
Who wrote that?
That's the petition that came in.
Well, okay, I mean, I'd rather, because I don't have that language in front of me, and I heard, I heard it. I heard what you said. But I, I'd want to, I'd want to think about that a little bit. What I'm imploring anybody, I'd rather, and then, and then the deadlines on there. I would rather just have, I'd rather have the law department weigh in on it and see, see what the, so. I'm not going to make a motion because I'll defer the committee chair, but it would be nice to have, and we'll say compliment the committee chair. I'm not sure when the last time he chaired a meeting, but he, he had a doozy in front of him last week, so.
Many, many years ago.
He did a great job, did a great job at that one. So my compliments to Mr. Murphy on a very hard meeting for their first time on the gate in a while. But, you know, there's no rush on this, Mr. President. I don't think there's any rush, because if we're talking November ballot. So my thought now would be to at least table this here, to get some kind of feedback from the law department, and so we can, and I can at least see the written ballot question in front of me, and then proceed from there. That's just my, my thought. But I'd like to hear from the, from the chair of the committee if there's, if there's any, if he thinks that makes sense.
If we want to get an opinion from the law department, I'd be fine with that. But I mean, I, again, my, my theory on it and my thought was that people came forward. I know they got some answers, and they didn't get the, the answers that they may have wanted from Mr. Lovell. But it is a non-binding question. It is people trying to get involved in a process, a process obviously that they have a vested interest in. And I will try to encourage that process and encourage people to do that. But if we wanted to table it and wait for a legal opinion, or if we could ask the law department for a legal opinion right now, I mean, one way or the other, I would like to see this go on the ballot in November.
Hold on. Council Lacy had a question?
Thanks, I have a few comments. You know, I, I think the GNE was down here at, at the meeting last Wednesday, and they said that they, they support the expansion of the fiber network. It's just a matter of developing a capital plan and the funds. And one thing to just really distinguish is that even though the HG&E is like a quasi municipal entity, we don't manage their funds. They, they manage their own funds. So whatever it costs to establish a fiber network does not come at the expense of the taxpayers. It comes at the expense of the, the ratepayers and the, the rates that they would have to pay. And the ratepayers are really, I guess, philosophically a different entity than the taxpayers. And it's important to keep in mind that at the end of the day, yes, we are, we are both, as residents of, of Hoyoke, ratepayers to the GNE and taxpayers to the City of Hoyoke. But City of Hoyoke and the GNE have different interests at times. This is, this may be one of those times. I think that the petitioners made it really clear that they, they want to gauge community support, that the GNE has been collecting public opinion data on, you know, the support in the community for the fiber network, but they have been done in, in a somewhat piecemeal fashion. But they, they are probably getting a much more fine and granular set of data than what this ballot measure is going to do. And really, the, I think the, the, the main purpose that the ballot measure serves is really making sure that the entire community, or at least the community of voters who, who show up on election day, understand that the, the fiber network is out there and that it can be developed. Because I, I think one of the, one of the questions, so if you're doing a phone survey about your interest in the fiber network, do you, do you know what it is and that it is available to you? And I think that there, there is a, like an education, an outreach component to having this on the ballot, so that people understand that that is something that, that may be available to them, and that they should, when asked, be able to say, yes, this is something that we want, or no, it's not something that we want.
Council Bartley?
Well, I just want, I'm just going to make the motion then, that we, that we table it now, but we just refer it to law department so we can get-
Second?
We can get the written ballot language on an agenda, public agenda in front of us, so I can look at it, and the public can see the ballot question ahead of time. Thank you.
Second.
Clerk?
I just want to say that I remember a few years back when we had the ballot questions for the charter changes, and I believe we did have one non-binding question. I don't remember off the top of my head what it was, but I do remember that this body did have the law department weigh in on the language, and you did vote on specific language rather than just something that was kind of general in here. So for my office, I think it is better too, if we do have something, you know, more set in stone that is voted on for the body, just to kind of protect all of us, that we have something specific that we're going to be putting on the ballot, and it's not just one person trying to figure something out at the last minute. So I know I don't get a vote on this, but I do-
We'll give you one.
Suggest that it would be better to let the law department weigh in and then have it come back to you guys to take a vote on it as well.
Council Lacy?
My, my one question, and I'm happy to table and get the legal opinion on the language, but my one question is, when we received the ballot language or the petition, right? Didn't we have that, that full language in front of us? And then, so like what we're looking, what we're looking at sixteen A here is an order that was attached to the, the essentially legal ballot language that was filed, or that was, that, that ballot language was expected to be some sort of like legal?
Well, I think that the language that was provided by the petitioners is just language that they're suggesting that you use. But I think that at, and the end of the day, this body has the right to make the language in any way they want it to read. And I can pull up language from the last non-binding question that we did a few years back, but I'm pretty sure non-binding question also specifically states in there that, you know, what a non-binding question is opposed to a binding question. And I think that's really important for the voters to know as well, that the outcome of this is not going to just make this happen. It's just more like informational. I think that's important too. So I can do some research and look in some of the past questions for non-binding we've had as well.
Council Bacon?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the reason that I supported this question going on the ballot is because it's non-binding, and I completely 100% agree with Council Leahy that any binding petitions should be sought by the citizens, not imposed upon the citizens. And in that regard, that's the difference that I see with this one. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
I, I think it'd be pretty easy for me to go out 20 signatures to make North Hampton Street one-way. Now, is that a good thing to do? I don't think it is. I think if I wanted to make North Hampton Street one-way, I would have to go get 25-plus thousand signatures, you know, to get a good feel of what the citizens want at Hoyoke.
So the motion was to table referring to legal to come back with a sample ballot question, working with the clerk's office to give us that.
How much time does she need? How much time does she need, Mr. President?
Crystal?
Next month.
Thirty days?
Motion to suspend the rules, allow legal to speak. All those in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, I mean, they've already, if I can have that language given to me, we can put something together pretty quick, probably for the next, are we trying to file this with next city council meeting? It's two weeks.
Whenever. There's no rush on it.
All right. So motion is to table, allow legal and the clerk's office to provide us the sample for next meeting. Is that good?
Sounds good.
All those in favor? All opposed? Sixteen B. Committee on Charter and Rules was referred in order that the city council create a home rule petition that limits the executive branch slash mayor for, to asking one government body, such as the city council, or Hoyoke redevelopment, or hedict, or Hoyoke Housing Authority to purchase, declare surplus, or take via eminent donain any real property. The home rule petition would mandate that the mayor slash executive branch get one bite at the apple. Once a vote is made, then shall remain in effect for two years. The purpose of this is to effectuate that the government body vote in intent of the city charter, city ordinance, and master of laws, that the city council maintain a decision slash making role in any matter concerning real property affected the City of Hoyoke. This order comes because of the recent 30,000 purchase of 515-519 Dwight Street, which is across from City Hall, by the Hoyoke Housing Authority, recorded 11/30/2017, CD detached. Earlier that year, the city council by a vote of committee, June 5, 2017, and a vote of the full city council, June 6, 2017, by an eight to three margin, denied taking 515-519 Dwight Street via eminent donain. However, the mayor and director of OPED persuaded Hoyoke Housing Authority to purchase the site for 30,000 from the property number via a straight purchase and sale agreement. The deed of the Hoyoke Housing Authority, the site owners, recorded 11/30/2017, book 21967, page 228, in the Hampton County registered deeds. Thereafter, the City of Hoyoke via CDBG funds not approved by the Hoyoke City Council was given approval by HUD reimbursing Hoyoke Housing Authority via check dated 1/29/2018. Lastly, I note that the city council recorded the Hoyoke Housing Authority for four members appointed by the mayor and one by the governor have considered the same recommend that have been complied with.
Okay, so first, let me just, and I meant to say this before, because I really wanted to thank Council Bacon and Council McGee, because it was the first time I've chaired a meeting in thirty-something years, and parliamentary procedure is not the top of my brain at this stage of my life. So I do appreciate all your little tidbits and tips as I went along there and made one mistake after another. So I did want, I wanted to say that the first time, but I do appreciate your help. This, in this case, number one, the recommendation is that it's been complied with. But I do want to, I do want to make a few comments. Number one, I do think Council Bartley, Brezneren, and Sullivan filed an order with exceptionally good cause, and it would be my hope that it shouldn't ever have, have to happen again. As I looked at all the documents that were provided, I also saw that there was another issue. And by all accounts, it appears the Housing Authority Commission meeting that the city applied for funding for low-income housing credits, Mass Works, with the suggestion that the city in fact did own all of those parcels. And I did ask the mayor that question, and just as quoting from the minutes, "This park has been part of both the low-income housing tax credit applications as well as the Mass Works applications from the inception of the development projects." And Marcos Marrero went on to explain the potential ramifications with funding sources. Should we not be able to see this to fruition since it has been part of the funding application from the start? Mayor Morris, and these are all quotes, Mayor Morris added that this has been included in both the Mass Works applications and the LIHTC applications, and he is concerned about the consequences with the funding sources. Should we have to remove it from the plan? So this is, I mean, it's definitely a contradiction to what the mayor said at the meeting. Clearly, the, a plan was put out, and I'm not against what eventually happened, but a plan was put out without the city actually owning what we were in effect planning to use. And that's certainly something that should be corrected as we go along. But I'll make a motion that the committee report, that the order's been complied with, be approved.
Council Bartley?
I just have to make a friendly amendment to, to thank you back in the report, because I think you hit the salient point. I just want to make a friendly amendment if I could, that we, we approve a home rule petition as a foreset in the, in the written order.
Second.
So the amendment is to not comply with, but that the home rule petition be approved?
That's right.
It was seconded. Our discussion?
Our discussion. This is a, for, for those, and a lot of us, several here attended the meeting. I wrote out the order as specifically as I could, knowing that that committee is formerly known as the Black Hole, and I knew it wouldn't come up for a while. And so we just would put the salient points in there. This, and I'm only going to point out one thing from the many meeting minutes. Mr. President, who's getting order? Okay, thank you. So we, we voted for, we voted not to, not to approve that, that land transfer. And it was right, you know, it's in the, in the meeting minutes, it was eight to three. We voted not to do it. And then a few months later, the mayor went, and Mr. Marrero went around us, and then went to Hoyoke Housing Authority, they had, just a few months later, had a special meeting in August of, in August of 2017, a special meeting to, to vote, to procure that, that parcel. And as I point out, in the Hoyoke Housing Authority members, each paid $5,000 a year, four appointed by the mayor, one is appointed by the governor. That vote went down at Hoyoke Housing Authority three to one. The mayoral appointees voted yes, and the gubernatorial appointee voted no. The gubernatorial appointee said in the minutes, Commissioner Wilson commented, that his decision would have been much easier to make if he had had materials or a packet beforehand, giving him background information on the issue. So Benny Wilson, a commissioner of Hoyoke Housing Authority, these minutes are phenomenal. Whoever wrote these minutes, I feel like you're in the room, said, "You didn't even have any information about the whole vote, and they took a vote on it to buy the property." And this is ramrotted by the mayor and Mr. Marrero. This body's got to stand up for itself. The mayor in no way is going to sign a home rule petition limiting his power. I know that, we all know that. But we took a vote in here, those of us that showed up, the eleven of us that showed up that night. We took a vote, said no. And why did Hoyoke Housing Authority buy that property? Because the mayor gave them a promise. You vote for it, you pay the money now, and we'll reimburse you the $31,000 later. That's in fact exactly what happened. That's not right. That's not right to do that. So if we, if we just let this go, if we just let it pass us by right now, fine. I don't think we should. I think we should take a roll call vote on this now. I don't care where you stand on the mayor. This is executive overreach. That's all that this is about. Whether you agree with a $390,000 park across the street, which was a former Pizza Palace or not, you know, whatever. You know, could, could, could that have gone into sidewalks, or, you know, we don't, God knows, we don't need any new sidewalks or any, any, we don't need any of that. But, so we got another park. Put that to the side. It's not about, it's about going right around city council. That's what it's about. I, I just, I think we have to, I think we should take a stand on this, Mr. President, and that's it.
Council Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I voted for- I voted for the action of the committee to recommend complied with. The reason that I did that at the time was because the mayor used the bully pulpit and came to the microphone and said, "And if you pass this, I'm not gonna sign it anyway." So at that moment, I sort of said, "Well, it's sort of gonna be a false process to attempt to pass it, because we already know the conclusion of any vote that we take." However, as I thought about it more, there were a number of things about it that bothered me. One was that, when it came to the city council, it was originally $20,000. And at the end of the day, community monies of $30,000 were spent. So somewhere along the way, the property became $10,000 more valuable. And that is problematic to me, because we are supposed to be the stewards of the tax money and the public funds. All these monies that come to us, or they come from the state or from the local taxes, are taxes that people paid. The government doesn't make any money. It just spends people's money. And so that bothers me. That's a huge increase. The second thing that bothers me is the workaround. It was acknowledged in the meeting, and the other reason I voted complied with was that what the mayor did was legal, okay? So technically, everything that the mayor did was within his executive authority. But to Counselor Bartley's point, does that make it right? And no, it isn't right. And I would actually say that, for those of us who have many disagreements with our current president, this move would make him proud. The President of the United States, that is. Because it was a highly, you know, creative and, you know, workable way to work around the recognized structure to accomplish what he wished to accomplish. So that is why I, tonight, seconded this motion. And I do believe that to make a public statement relative to what we think about it and to inform the public that we think that it's not the best use of public money for it to have been worked around this way is important. Thank you.
Counselor Lacy.
Thank you. Yeah, I just see it as, you know, it's a form of venue shopping. You don't have, you know, the votes or whatever you need in this particular venue, and there are other legal channels, the operative term, legal channels, to work through. Then, I think, you know, as Counselor Bacon mentioned, you know, the mayor did what he had to do to advance, you know, his agenda, and he did so through available legal means. I will not be signing the home rule petition, because I just think that there should be multiple... I mean, there's multiple boards, and there's multiple avenues. It's the same thing that's what, you know, in some ways, what's happening with marijuana policy. It's not being advanced at the national level, and so individual states are taking it upon themselves to craft their own policies and represent the interests of their constituents. So I don't, I understand the issue if there was a vote in this body to say no, but I think that we shouldn't be the only, the only venue or means through which the mayor can advance part of his policies.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, I'd remind everybody also that, to make that park, there was also CDBG funds used. Ones that the Citizens Advisory Committee, the DGNR Committee, and the city council voted against expending. So it's not just what was done with, sorry. The message, and I'm gonna support this also. The message we're being sent is, sending, trying to send is also fiscal responsibility. $390,000 for another park when we can't maintain properly the parks we already have. We're gonna add another one to the list. $390,000, when we've got questions about being able to afford new schools, all of this other... It's also about fiscal responsibility. I think it's, that even though this is largely symbolic, maybe we need to send a good symbolic message also about fiscal responsibility.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. So my message is twofold. One, very similar to Counselor Sullivan's. I had a major issue with using the community block grant money. This is, obviously, the park looks nice. It's very nice. However, you know, they did use the community block grant money after, you know, we voted not to. You know, I said this the other night. The mayor was very transparent. He got it up, and he said, "This is what I want." And he pretty much said, you know, "This is what I want." My frustration isn't, I think Counselor Bacon said something like, you said, "House of Cards," or "No Trump," or whatnot. And this is something like out of a movie or whatnot, that he went, and he went a different way. But as I said the other night, that's the legal way of doing it. Where I think our frustration should be, and mine is, is with the Housing Authority. And they saw everybody that didn't want this, and yet they continued to do so. That's where my frustration lies. Thank you.
Anyone else? So the motion is that this, that the home rule petition be approved. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Oh, so roll call. Clerk will call. Roy, you're voting yes. You're voting for the home rule petition.
Sullivan. Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
No.
Bartley.
Yes.
Bresnan.
Yes.
Leahy.
No.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lacy.
No.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern, oh, Murphy.
Yes.
Eight a's, three n's.
What's your vote? You approve the home rule petition. Off to 16C. Committee on Chartering Rules will refer in order that the city amend its charter and replace the mayor as the chair of the school committee and make the mayor an ex-factio member, allowing the school committee to elect its own chair. Consider as a recognition and give leave to withdraw.
Make a motion that the committee report be received and adopted.
Motion is to receive and adopt that be withdrawn. Under discussion, Counselor Murphy.
The only person, school committee woman, LaFaye, did speak, and she's, I believe, the vice chair now. She had no problem with staying as we are. The maker of the order is no longer a counselor. And there was no one really trying to make any changes, so we just felt that this time, just let it go.
No further discussion. Motion is to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Joint School and City Council, there wasn't anything, so now on some motions, orders, and resolutions. I'd say take up 18...
And 20?
And 20 as a package. Suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is standard stuff that we've been doing. 18 is $12,537.82 from firefighters, two injured on duty, same amount. 20 is $3,409.86 from patrolmen, two injured on duty. Four firefighters. Three for police. Two. So motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion would be to pass the second reading. And just as a reminder for everyone, this is where if someone's injured, they take from their line item, put on injured on duty, to then pay, so it's just an accounting procedure. So motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call. Roy, if you vote yes, you vote for the transfer.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley. Bresnan. Leahy. LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
What's your vote? You approved it. 19. $22,935.05 for wire inspector to inspection electrical. Would be referred to finance.
Motion to refer to finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 21. From Counselor McGivern, the city council finance committee meet with the police department to discuss leasing police cruisers.
Motion to refer to finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 22, from Counselor Murphy, or at the mayor, provide the funding needed for the upgrade of electrical system at Wisteriahurst.
Make a motion to send the mayor and copy to public safety.
All right, so to public safety and a copy to the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Under discussion, Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, this, they did apply for funding from community development funds, and they didn't get, I think the mayor put in $30,000. But I've been having conversations with both the city engineer and the person, director of the Wisteriahurst. And this is, just so you know, there are some serious electrical issues there. City engineer, these are quotes from, that he sent me. "The biggest electrical issues at Wisteriahurst are antiquated panel boards and branch feeders wiring to these panels. To service these panels, even to replace a fuse, requires opening the face of the panel and exposing the service person to a 200V power. Under current standards, even a licensed electrician is not supposed to work on these live panels because of arc flash and electrocution concerns." I mean, there are, and I know the director has indicated that they've had to turn people away because they can't plug in things at various locations. And obviously, there's a major safety issue. There's some fire concern, although it's a personal safety issue, both for employees and for people attending. And it's not the kind of thing that we can just sit and let it go and then not deal with. I mean, we need to get it corrected so that Wisteriahurst is preserved, it's safe, and it's getting maximum use from the community.
Send to the mayor and to the public safety.
So motion is to receive, refer a copy to the mayor and to public safety committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 23 to 29 is done. 30, from Counselor Sullivan. That representative from the Hoyok School Department be invited to discuss the cost of lighting and janitorial services for youth athletic program.
Yeah, I'd kinda like this one to go to public service. Counselor Leahy would be...
Yeah, absolutely. Second.
Receive and refer to public service.
This is, and this is also the second piece of the Krispy Kreme speech.
How much you want for the donuts?
With more donuts to come. Okay. You're a public tourist. All in favor? All opposed? 31, from Counselor Tomlin, Counselor Anderson Burgos. Said, "No park can be allowed, 1470 Dwight Street in front of..."
Ordnance?
Receive, refer to ordinance.
Ordinance, please.
Motion to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 32, from Counselor Valentin. That the city council in Chapter 42, Article 1, Section 18, modify the plan review fees on the last line of the chart to state that the five cent per square foot be charged only on the portion of the premises where the work is being carried out.
Is that something?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Maybe we could take these as a package, 33, 34...
33, 34, and 35?
Five, yes, sir.
Suspend rules, take up as a package?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 33, from Counselor Anderson Burgos. Order that no turn-on-red sign be placed at Hillside Ave on both sides of the intersection approaching Cherry Street.
Ordinance.
34 is that no parking here at a corner sign be placed 20 feet on the side of Isabella Street leading, so that's a no parking sign. 35, request that pedestrian safety study be done at the intersection of North Hampton Street and Dwight Street.
33 and 34 for ordinance.
Four can go as a package to ordinance, but 35 should go to public safety.
All right, 33 and 34 to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And where do you want 35?
Public safety.
And 35 to public safety.
Please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 36, from Counselor Bartley. Or at the city council, in accordance with mass general law, city code of ordinances, vote to approve the taking of certain temporary easements.
Approved.
DGNR.
DGNR.
Motion to send to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 37. Order that the DPW remove the handicap parking at 14 Center Street.
Ordinance.
Motion to send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And a copy to...
Donnie Welch.
All the members. 38. From Counselor McGee, order that a no parking sign be placed in front of 17 Beacon Ave.
Ordinance.
Limited timeframes, not weekends, to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 39, that the city council invite in Scott McPherson to discuss the updates of the media equipment.
Public service?
Public service. He has two things he's looking to do in the chambers, so I felt it was good that everyone hear what he wants to do and make a vote on it. So the public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Late files. Late File A, from Counselor Murphy. Order that the handicap sign be placed at 16 Cabbage Tree. This really isn't a late file. It came in, but it was missed. But I know he's new, but we're gonna give him a break. So this is a handicap, so to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is from me. I do apologize, but Counselor McGivern, too. Order that the State Senator Hemison and State Representative Vega file legislation and/or request the city of Hoyok receive an exemption to the MSBA formula for funding the two middle schools in order to achieve the full 80% reimbursement of the build-out. So Counselor McGivern and I are asking that they fight in the legislation to not put us down at the 58 and force us back up to the 80.
Do you want to adopt and refer, or send it to DGR?
No, adopt and refer, because we have a timeframe, and I'd rather see what the legislation could do for a good old city.
So motion to adopt and refer.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up final action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Two.
Motion would be receive, adopt, and refer to the senator and representative. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are no other matters. The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.